Monday, December 2nd, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counselor Kane, Counselor Kroll, Counselor DeBona, Counselor Harris, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Mahoney, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Palmucci, Chairman Liang.
Present. Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. There's a few matters before us this evening, but I'm going to go in order here. So, the first two are actually connected. It's Counsel Order 2018-027, Ordinance Amending City of Quincy Zoning Ordinance, adding Section 6.10 Marijuana Establishments, and Order Number 2018-028, Order Accepting the Sales Tax Provision of MGL Chapter 64N Marijuana Tax as amended. So, we have Mr. Durkin here this evening to present, but I want to just clarify for folks before we get started. So, what's in front of you for the packets are the original 2018 proposed marijuana ordinance, and then it's redlined with some changes that were made that we had discussed at one of our previous ordinance committee meetings. And in addition to that, there are now also blue line changes that are in front of us. And Mr. Durkin will speak to those changes as well. But I just want to thank my colleagues who are with me this evening, the Clerk's office as well, and everyone at the Solicitor's Office for their work on this. We've been going through this ordinance and, you know, really trying to make sure that we're digesting this information and putting our best foot forward on how we're going to implement this as a city council. It's our role here in Quincy to not determine if we're going to move forward with this. That decision was made by the voters here in the city and the residents in the city. Our responsibility up here is to determine how. And so, there was a lot of work that has gone into it this last year and a half, and I just want to thank my colleagues, folks in the Clerk's Office, and everyone in the Solicitor's Office for their work on that. So, with that, Mr. Durkin, if you can take it over and just go over the two amendments that are in front of us, the redlined and blue lined versions, and then I'll open up to questions to my colleagues.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Lang, members of the council. Good evening. And if I could just take up Counsel Order 2018-028, and that's, that is an order that allows the city to avail itself of the option that the state law gave cities and towns, and that is to be able to charge a sales tax for marijuana retailers. And it allows cities and towns to charge up to 3% of retail sales. And so, this is just adopting that state law, and it's the mechanism by which cities and towns adopt that. So, that's what that's about, and I strongly recommend that the council approve this.
Thank you. Sorry, just one moment if you could. Counselor Palmucci?
I would just offer a positive, move for positive recommendation of 2018-028.
Great. So, positive recommendation for 2018-028, accepting the sales tax provision from that under laws, Chapter 64 and marijuana tax. Is there any discussion on that order for my colleagues? Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, just quickly, because we've been away from this for a little while, Mr. Durkin, and I just wanted to, just clarification purposes of under 6.10.4 Performance Standards.
Sorry to interrupt Counselor DeBona. This is for the order just about the sales tax, and then we're going to move back to...
Oh, it's the tax, I'm sorry. Just the 3%. 3%, okay. Oh, we jumped over.
We did, I'm sorry. So, we're moving to just, there's a positive recommendation just for the sales tax, so we're going to discuss that and then get back to that.
I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just trying to get that one out of the way.
Any other discussion on the sales tax? All right. So, moving back to, we don't even want to talk on this one. Okay, I'm sorry, all in favor of accepting the tax? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, now we'll go back to 2018-027, which is the ordinance that we're reviewing.
Okay, thank you. Just to bring the council up to date on just a couple of matters that are involved with this, the Cannabis Control Commission, which is the state licensing authority, in June of 2019 approved draft regulations for what are known as cannabis cafes or social consumption establishments, as well as retail marijuana delivery services. There was a comment period after that that extended through August, and then at the end of September of this year, the Cannabis Control Commission approved regulations for marijuana delivery services and so-called cannabis cafes. These, as I say, rules were approved. My understanding is that the deliveries and licensing for deliveries is something that's going to happen in the near future, but it's several months away. And my understanding also from reading about the regulations regarding onsite consumption is that the Cannabis Control Commission has authorized a pilot program involving up to 12 communities, and the regulations are fairly restrictive, and they give exclusive rights to certain categories of businesses, businesses that are majority owned by microbusinesses and craft marijuana cooperatives. So, that's, that's something that I considered when I drafted these additional proposed amendments to the Council Order 2018-027. So, the first amendment would be amendment to Section 6.10.1, which the heading is "Purpose", and I just added different categories of marijuana establishments to contemplate the social consumption marijuana retailers and the retail marijuana delivery services, and I added the all-encompassing phrase, or any type of marijuana-related business that has been duly licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission. So, this just makes it more comprehensive and makes the ordinance cover all possible marijuana establishments that might want to come to Quincy. In addition, I offered amendment to Section 6.10.6, dealing with off-site sales by retailers. And in the first iteration of this zoning ordinance, we were prohibiting that. So, I added the words, unless such sales are made by a marijuana retailer, delivery service duly licensed pursuant to the authority of the CCC and granted a special permit by the city. So, this, this just acknowledges, recognizes that off-site sales by retailers might happen in the form of delivery services that are licensed by the state. And then, the third amendment would be an amendment to Section 6.10.12 regarding notification, and I just deleted the first sentence because it's unnecessary, it's superfluous, and there are a lot of other notice requirements contained in that paragraph involving community outreach meetings, and there's a lot of notification involved with that. And then, there's also, the other safeguard is a host community agreement that any marijuana establishment has to enter into with, with the city before it can even apply for a license with the state. And the last amendment, the final amendment, deals with public consumption of marijuana, which in the first, in the initial ordinance that I presented, that was prohibited, but we have to acknowledge that that may be licensed in the form of onsite, or as a cannabis cafes, they're called. So, I added the following language, unless a public establishment has been duly licensed for on-premises marijuana consumption pursuant to the authority of the Cannabis Control Commission and granted a special permit by the city of Quincy. Again, cannabis cafes, my understanding is this is, this is a long time off, and it's going to be, there's an exclusivity provision so that only certain categories of businesses can partake in that. And again, that's, there's a pilot program that's been implemented by the Cannabis Control Commission, and we'll see how that goes. So, back to the original ordinance, and this is the redline ordinance. I just want to emphasize that this is, this is not necessarily a comprehensive ordinance that deals with every possible problem or issue that could come up involving a marijuana establishment. But what it is, is an amendment to our zoning code, and the idea behind this amendment to the zoning code is to restrict where marijuana businesses can go in the city of Quincy, and it offers reasonable safeguards, reasonable regulations regarding time, place, and manner, which the state allows local cities and towns to do. So, as it stands now, I mean theoretically, a marijuana business could go in your neighborhood as long as it was zoned for business. We'd have to have a host community agreement that was agreed to by the city, but theoretically, it could go in a, in a business district somewhere in Quincy. By passing this zoning ordinance, we would be letting the world know that there are places in Quincy where we don't want marijuana establishments to be. And so, you know, we've, we've established that we don't want them to be within 1,500 feet of a residential district, Residence A, B, or C, and we don't want them to be within 500 feet of a school or other places where youth, folks under the age of 21 gather. So, that's, that's what this ordinance does, and, you know, my, my recommendation would be that, that the council seriously consider passing this, so that we have something in place. We can revisit this issue after the first of the year. We can come up with more comprehensive regulations in a general ordinance, if, if there's an appetite for that, but I strongly recommend that the council consider passing this ordinance as well as the local option tax. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll open up to my colleagues. I know Counselor DeBona, you had a comment earlier that you had wanted to make on this particular order, so if you'd like to go.
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, just getting back to exactly what you were just talking about, Mr. Durkin, 6.10.4 Performance Standards under 1A.
Yes.
There's a whole group from A all the way down to K, which talks about pre-existing elementary, secondary, public, you know, your kindergarten, your preschool, through your, you know, 1 through 12 configuration, your playgrounds, your childcare centers, public parks, libraries, public beach, public skating rink, in that, in that A through K. 500 linear feet of this particular A through K. Did you mention before that that is the law, that you can't increase the linear feet right now, or how, can, can we make an amendment to increase it to 1,000, 1,500?
What we discussed previously, Counselor, is that the state legislation doesn't allow these, the state legislation sets a limit of 500 feet, and it says that cities and towns can't go beyond 500. In other words, they can't increase it to 600, or 800, or 1,000. They can reduce it if they want, and I have looked at some other towns' bylaws that have reduced that distance from 500 down to 200. But, and then that's only for schools, that's only K to 12 schools. These other facilities that I've listed just put in added safeguards for Quincy.
Okay.
But I would suggest to you, Counselor, that this is a pretty restrictive ordinance, and so, to go beyond 500 feet, first of all, wouldn't be allowed because it conflicts with state law as far as schools are concerned, and as far as these, these other facilities, I would suggest that it's already pretty restrictive at 500 feet. And when you add in the fact that this ordinance doesn't allow a marijuana establishment to be within 1,500 feet of a residential district, I mean, that's, that's, there's a lot of safeguards there.
Do you think that legislation will change over time and add linear feet, or do you think this is going to stay pretty much the staple of the state legislation?
I think we might see lots of changes in the rules and regulations that are promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission, but I don't foresee that changes in buffer zones would be probably one of those changes. You know, we'll see. We'll see how this, this all works out.
So, if you, if it does change in state legislation, we can come back and revisit this on an ordinance change here in, in this council chamber, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That, that really, really sums up that particular 500 linear feet. You've spoken about this in the past. We've, I mean, we've, we started this back on February 8th of 2018. This is almost two years later, and we're trying to get this in before the new year you wanted to do as a recommendation to the council, but as long as we have some type of blueprint here in Quincy, I think we can start from there, and if we can't change any state legislation from this council, then we can foresee something in the future. So, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor, thank you. And once again, if this is passed, we have something to point to when a prospective marijuana establishment wants to come to Quincy.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do any other counselors have questions on this particular, Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I know it's, I don't know if it's, call it a labor of love, but you certainly put a lot of labor into it, so we thank you for that. Couple of things I wanted to just run through with you. So, just hitting on the big, the big points here. The Zoning Board of Appeals is going to be the special permit granting authority?
In this ordinance, yes.
What was the thinking behind that versus, we certainly shouldn't be the SPGA, but what was the thinking behind not having it be the planning board? And I'm not, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, I'm just think, I'm just curious as to what your thinking was on it.
Well, I had looked at what some other cities and towns were doing, and that's, that seemed to be a popular way to go, special permit granting authority. It seemed to me it was either that or it was the licensing board.
Really, not the planning board?
No. Well, some of the, some of the ordinances I looked at had the planning board involved as well, but in an advisory capacity, with the special, with the special permit granting authority being the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so, I'll be honest, I'm not wedded to this. This was just, this was one way to set up a permit granting authority, a licensing...
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't, I don't know that one is better than the other, and that's why I kind of wanted to see if you had a rationale for why one might be better than the other. My only thought is that would, would site plan review be implicated, or could it at a later time be implicated if we were to change the zoning and to put site plan review in our zoning table for marijuana uses, right?
That, you know, Counselor, that's something we could definitely look at.
Okay. I mean, I, I tell you why I like the planning board, and I don't mind the zoning board doing this, but I like the planning board because they, they have a better, I think, and I could be wrong, but they have a better kind of foundation of knowledge in terms of how each property is interplaying with other properties around it, whereas a zoning board is more of a kind of a one-off variance-type situation, and they're more, you know, does this make the neighborhood worse, yes or no? Whereas a planning board, I always tell people, the planning board is, the zoning board is yes or no, because they can kill a project, whereas a planning board is how. It's not yes or no, it's how something should be done. So, I think the how in, when it comes to marijuana establishments is important, but, so maybe we'll do that as a follow-up next, next session.
I think, Counselor, one of the things that occurred to me was that perhaps the, the body that's granting the permit should also maybe be the body that's enforcing some of the other restrictions.
Sure.
And I just thought that, you know, the, the ZBA with the building inspector would be in a position to do that, you know, the licensing board could do this as well.
Right. Okay. So, page two, under Performance Standards, Performance Standard C and Performance Standard E.
Yep.
I would offer to amend by inserting the word "public" on, on C, so that it read "any public playground", and then on E, "any public facility which sponsors youth activities".
I would have no problem with that.
Okay. I, I'm aware of specific litigation where a permit was issued by a town, and someone sued to challenge that permit by saying that there was an apartment building that had a playground, you know, attached to the property, and that their ordinance was very similar to this, where it said "any playground", and they were using that as a justification. I don't think that's what we're, I don't read that as what we're trying to do here. It would be more like a public playground where we expect kids, not, you know, a small playground attached to an apartment building.
Yep.
So, I have a couple of other amendments, so I'll just, I'll just keep going through my questions and amendments, and then offer them all en masse. Explain to me the distances, how they'll be calculated?
The distances?
Yeah, that next section.
From the, the border of the facility to the border of the marijuana establishment?
Okay, so not property line, but building to building?
No.
Because one says, because it says "to the nearest portion of the building"?
Right. It, it says building, yes.
So, it would be from the marijuana building...
The nearest portion...
To the property line.
To the property line, using walking access, pedestrian access.
And so, that is not, that is, that is how we interpreted the medical marijuana ordinance that allowed Vermont to be located where it is, because it's, as the crow flies, it's not an appropriate distance under our statute from the ball fields across the street on Quarry Street, but because you can't, you can't get there from there, you have to go all the way around, we did it as pedestrian access, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, number two, here on page two, where it talks about the host community agreement and that the mayor is the contracting authority?
Yes.
I would seek to add some sort of council oversight to that by way of amendment, by adding a line, "at least 60 days prior to execution by the mayor, the HCA must be submitted to the city council for review." That doesn't give us any, that wouldn't give the city council any authority to vote on it, but at least we would be aware of it. My concern as a ward counselor is that, and I wouldn't put this to Mayor Koch because it's not how he does business, but I don't know, you know, there might be a different mayor and a different ward counselor in the future who don't get along, and I could see a mayor signing a host community agreement and excluding the ward counselor. I mean, that theoretically could happen, and as a ward counselor, that makes me very uncomfortable, and not only could it happen over a counselor's objection, but it could happen essentially in secret, because there's nothing about the host community agreement that is a public matter. So, this just kind of makes that host community agreement publicly reviewable by the council.
Could you repeat that amendment, just like...
Sure. At least 60 days prior to execution by the mayor.
Okay.
The HCA must be submitted to the city council for review.
Okay, gotcha.
How long does a special permit last? So, in Section 4 here on page three, talks about if the, the CCC doesn't grant the license, then the special permit is null and void. Would that be operative under, under Chapter 40? So, it'd be like a year, you get a year?
I don't, I don't think it would, I don't think it would just be limited to a year.
Okay. Because, I mean, I guess my thinking is, and this is happening in other communities, you have, there's a lot of money behind these, these entities, and they're very, I don't know, it's a cutthroat business, right? And first to open, first to market is a big competitive advantage. So, what you have is, in municipalities like ours, where there is a limited district or limited geographical, geographic area where these can be located, you have people going in and applying for permits prior to having the rest of their ducks in a row, so that they can tie up that location, because a municipality isn't going to give another, because we don't allow them within 500 feet of each other. So, if the district is only 5,000, you know, linear feet, it limits how many can go in each district. You know what I'm saying? I mean, is this something to think about? I don't, I don't know that we're going to solve that problem in this now.
Quickly, before you jump into that, I just want to remind folks that we do have about three minutes left before we have to move on to the other meeting that we have this evening, and so, if you want to just quickly jump in there for the last remaining minutes, we can certainly recess and come back to this discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that in order for a marijuana establishment to apply for a license with the state, they have to show that they've had a community outreach meeting, that they have a host community agreement that's executed, and then the prospective marijuana establishment can apply for a license with the state, and at that point, the state will contact the local city or town to make sure that they are in compliance with all of our, with our ordinance and all the, all the regulations that are contained in that.
I'll be honest with you though, Steve, it's, it's kind of a sham process, some parts of it, right? So, there's this form that the CCC requires, and it's like a one-sentence form that says, "we have on such and such date held a public meeting", right? That's it. That's all you have to submit. I was discussing recently with a, an attorney for a marijuana establishment that was looking to open in Woodford, and I had some disagreements with them, and I said, "Well, we'll just see what happens at the community meeting. You can hear from the people how, how bad of an idea this is. If you don't believe me, I'll put 100 people in the room who'll drive you out of town in a heartbeat." And he said, "I'll have the community meeting at midnight on a Saturday." He said, "There's no regulation that says when I have to have that community meeting." So, that to me, technically, it's true, right? And they can still sign that piece of paper, and there's nothing in the regs from the CCC that says we can challenge that piece of, that, that certification, because it's a certification made by the applicant. So, so I just worry, there's some shady characters out there in this business, but in the interest of time, I'll just add one more point to discuss that amendment that I'd like to make. It's Section 11 on page three, and it's the hours.
Okay. Okay, Section 11, gotcha, yep.
Yeah, so I would prefer just 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I mean, that's my, I don't know what other people think, but I, so it looks like we limit the hours on Sunday. As a ward counselor, I would want most of the business to be on Saturday and Sunday, so that's not creating a, and I'm thinking of, you know, Rashudi Drive, but so that's not creating a problem. I would think the weekends would be the time that they would be the busiest, and we are getting 3% of their sales, so we want them to be successful, but I also don't, I think there's more of a negative impact if they're going, you know, between 5:00 and 9:00 PM or 5:00 and 8:00 PM. Do you have a strong feeling one way or another as terms of hours?
I do not. I would pray the council's judgment on that issue.
Okay. Seven days a week, I would, that's what I would suggest. But I'm done for now, if you want to move on, Madam Chair, and I'll offer, I don't know if we're coming back to this or whatever, I'll offer those as amendments, perhaps the first two together, and then the hours separate, but...
Sure. Yeah, no, I think I'm keeping a running list of all the amendments discussed, presented both by you and by Mr. Durkin, and so, I do appreciate the respective time and do want to recess this, and then after the other meetings we have scheduled for this evening, we'll come back to ordinance and go through the amendments. So, with that, I'd like to recess the ordinance committee meeting at 7:01 PM.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Quincy City Council's public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 tax classification. Just a little ground rules for the meeting. We'll have a presentation done by Colleen Healy out of the Assessors' Office, and then again, this is a public hearing, so there'll be an opportunity for the public to weigh in, and just, I guess by way of nature, there are sign-in sheets available in the back of the room, so if you don't feel comfortable coming to the microphone, please feel free to voice your opinion by signing either sheets in favor or opposition, again, located at the back of the room. So, at this point in time, I would turn the presentation over to Colleen.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Okay. So, I'd like to open this meeting by thanking the staff of the Assessors' Department for their hard work throughout the year to make tonight possible. Joining me tonight are my fellow board members, John Rowland and Christopher Rooney. Tonight, this meeting is held for the purpose...
So I'd like to open this meeting by thanking the staff of the assessors' department for their hard work throughout the year to make tonight possible. Joining me tonight are my fellow board members John Rowland and Christopher Rooney. Tonight, this meeting is held for the purpose of voting on the minimum residential factor. The vote taken tonight will determine whether all five classes of property will be taxed at the same or different rates. The assessed values were certified by the Department of Revenue in October in the fiscal year 2020 budget approved by this body back in June. We hope you had a chance to review the Understanding Your Taxes publication, um, that, you know, that we sent you last week. This publication, along with tonight's PowerPoint, will be available on our website tomorrow for anyone to view. So tonight's, members of the city council must decide whether to tax all classes of property at their full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, which results in a single tax rate, or to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift those taxes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers, resulting in a split tax rate. Since 1984, this council has voted to have a split tax rate. Assessors must classify all real property according to its use as of January first. The four classes of property are residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Be advised that anything used as a residential dwelling for human habitation is taxed at the residential rate. This includes apartment buildings. Personal property is a separate category and is treated as a class for purposes of allocating the tax levy. Personal property is classified based on the legal entity of the business, and all personal property is taxed at the commercial rate. This diagram above represents the total assessed value by class for fiscal year twenty. The residential class of property accounts for eighty-five percent of the total value. This chart further compares the total assessed value by class from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty. This chart further breaks down the increase within each class code from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty, and within the residential class code, you can see the highest increase was seen in the condominiums, which is up nine point one percent. The history of the total assessed value since FY sixteen is represented in the following chart. Contributing to the increase in value this year is a result of new growth. Listed above are some of the major developments put on the tax roll for fiscal year twenty. New growth is made up of real estate and personal property, and new growth is an increase in assessed value over a prior year because of new construction or physical improvements to a property. This chart displays new growth in terms of value by class, with sixty-eight percent of the total value attributable to new growth coming from the residential class of property. However, we also show this information in terms of tax dollars, because we remind you that the commercial pays double the, what the residential pays in terms of tax rate, which, as you can see on this chart here, even though the residential value was made up of sixty-eight percent, it still pays, you know, forty-nine percent in terms of tax dollars. Assessors must gather and analyze property sales in order to assess each property and apply market adjustments to meet the certification standards established by the Department of Revenue. The sale prices of comparable properties that sold in close proximity to the assessment date are the primary indicators of property value. So for fiscal year 2020, values were determined through analyzing sales that occurred during calendar year eighteen. The following chart breaks out the amount of single-family sales that occurred by neighborhood. These sales met, met standards set by the Department of Revenue for an arms-length transaction. And you can see that Wallaston had the highest amount of arms-length transactions in the single-family sales with a total of eighty-five. This chart displays the number of single-family sales in 2018 by price point. The highest volume of sales ranged from four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, and there were only seventeen sales under a purchase price of three hundred thousand. In analyzing our sales data, we determined the median sale price by neighborhood. Quincy Center had the highest median sale price of five ninety-two-five, preceded by Squanum with the median sale price of five ninety-two. The average single assessed, single, the average single-family home has an assessed value of four ninety-two-nine, which is a five-point-six percent increase over last year's value. If a residential factor of one was voted on this body, then all classes of property will be taxed at the same rate, and the city of Quincy will have a single tax rate of fourteen dollars and twenty cents. This means that each class of property will pay its full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, with both residential and commercial paying the same tax rate. Tonight, your vote determines whether we adopt the minimum residential factor of point eighty-seven, resulting in a residential tax rate of twelve dollars and forty-three cents for the residential class of property and twenty-four eighty-four for the commercial class of property. Does anyone have any questions?
You'll be on standby, right, as we revisit this? This is a public hearing, and, uh, the public is invited to participate in dialogue. Um, so at this po-
Sure.
I was going to do the public hearing just for time, but, uh, Colleen and company will be on standby.
Sure.
Um, so again, this is a public hearing. We want to hear from the public. Uh, if you'd like to speak, I would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. As you approach four, I will give you a signal. But, uh, please, by all means, approach the microphone, name and address for the record. And again, if you're, speaking in public is not necessarily a thing, there is an opportunity to sign in, in the back of the room with, uh, the sign-in sheet. So if anybody would like to, uh, speak.
I was going to defer to Mr. Rutherford, but I guess he's stuck up in the, oh, there he is. Um, members of the council. First off, I'd like to say it was nice to have a presentation about what is going to happen on the upcoming rate, even though it was just apparently handed out to you just a bit ago, and I have no idea, and we had no idea what the rate was going to be. By contrast, Waymouth published a really comprehensive discussion online last week about what they were going to be doing, and it included such data as what the assessment values were going to be, the average last year tax bill, the assessed value, the assessed value expected, and the increase there. The presentation we had didn't address that. The public cannot address what is coming down the pike because they had no knowledge. That's patently absurd. Then again, the tax rates were basically set when you all approved a six-point-three percent spending increase for fiscal 2020, and so continued this administration's long-ongoing roughly three or more times the rate of annual inflation budget spending increase. Put it another way, Quincy faces a structural deficit, and it will continue to do so for at least the intermediate future. The inter, the administration keeps touting how no, new growth has kept property tax rates at less than its spending increases. But such fails to acknowledge the fact that new development in Quincy will give rise to increased local services in the coming years, more school students, more traffic, increased first responder needs, higher DPW outlays, and so on. Put it another way, not only is administration not, just not acknowledging the reality of the new growth comes with costs. And speaking of the inevitable, eventually, the economy will cool, and so too will new growth tax revenue. And when this happens, locals are going to be whacked, be it because the existing property taxes with, with outsized property taxes, cuts in local services, or some combination of the two, because this administration has failed to see the city's woefully inadequate reserves merely kept, keep pace with the rate of annual spending increases in recent years. Such are not fiscally responsible plans. Granted, tonight's not the night for you all to address these things. And out of respect to Brian, I'm not going to address a whole lot more things that need to be addressed. But a good case can be made that the administration has already set the things, stage for things to start hitting the fan in around ten years, or maybe sooner if the economy suffers a long overdue rough patch. In any event, this body has long been whistling as you all walk by the graveyard next year, next door. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wishing to speak regarding the FY 2020 tax classification?
I'd rather go after Bill anyway, so. Uh, John Rutherford, um, I live in Taunton, but I'm here tonight representing my dad at sixty-two Grenwell Road. I will eventually be back there, or I will eventually be back here in the city. And I'm going to be briefed tonight. Um, from remembering what I just saw during that thing, fourteen dollars and twenty cents would be the universal tax rate if we had a single tax. I like that number. Um, that shows that we are doing a good job. I mean, the, the object of this meeting tonight is the picking of the percentage. It's not really complaining about how much money we're spending on taxes, and I think it's time to go down to the one-point-five. I think it's time to, you know, we need businesses to come to Quincy. I think we should be at the one-point-zero eventually, like the town of Hingham is, where they have a single tax rate, who they seem to be doing quite well right now. And eventually, we'll get more businesses that'll want to come here. But we got to go from one-point-seven-five to one-point-five, and the time to do that is when the tax rate is going down, and it's consistently going down, it's going down, it's going down, and it's going down. If people want to live in Quincy, they got to pay taxes, and it costs a lot of money for services, and everyone has to pay their fair share. And I think that the commercial properties can be, may be assessed more fairly, too. If you look at the commercial properties, I think there's an effect of having that one-point-seven-five split rate, which doesn't really get the assessed values where they really truly should be. If they were both at one-point-zero, we would have true taxes. So one thing I'm going to say about what your job is as city councilors, this is kind of what I, what I think. It's a two-government system. We have Mayor Koch, who I think, as you look over the last four years, I'm starting to see the vision. I didn't see it four years ago, but it's starting to make sense right now. We have a mayor who loves to ask the city council, "I want this. I want this. I want this." And it's fine to give the mayor this, and give the mayor this, and give the mayor this, but I'm going to say your job, I'm going to say, you're like the loan committee, and you guys have to agree if the loans that the mayor wants to borrow, if we should approve them. Or you could say no, and you can charge the taxpayers of today, or you're charging the taxpayers of the future. I think it's time for the people who live in Quincy today to start paying the shares that should, they should be paying. I mean, to give you an example, this right here, if anyone's watching or can see this at home, on a hundred thousand dollars on a twenty-year mortgage at three percent interest, you would pay five hundred and fifty-five dollars per month. So if we're borrowing just a short-term bond, and we're just paying the interest at three percent, then we're paying three hundred dollars. So instead of paying three hundred dollars and keep, you know, making that go over and over, why not start just paying the debt? I know it allows us to take a diff and go ten extra years, but what that means is that we can take something that should be paid in twenty years, and we can stretch it out and pay it in thirty years. Let's start just paying for things, like right away. If we're going to borrow, let's stop putting off for the future and start paying for today. Many of the people up on the council, um, have children and have families, and it's your children and families who are going to be taxed. So that, that's one thing. I did notice there is another bond offering that went in today, but the main point is, when you look at some of the things, we're moving two-point-two million dollars, we're moving four-point-one million dollars, we're moving two-point-nine million dollars. We're basically moving money to try to get the tax rate a little bit lower. I hope some of these things you say no to, and you, we take responsibility and we pay our taxes like we're supposed to pay them, instead of keep putting them off and off, because we have lots of new projects coming up, and we cannot just keep doing this. We have to basically bite the bullet, and we have to fairly pay our share of taxes. Fourteen dollars and twenty cents as a universal tax thing, to me, I think that means we're doing a good job. Now, like I said, tonight is the thing. Go to one-point-five.
Thank you, John.
Tell the businesses that we want people to come to Quincy. If we want Market Basket to come here, they're not going to pay one-point-seven-five. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, we are at just about seven-twenty. We have two more public hearings before we get into the regularly scheduled city council meeting. I would just ask, is anybody else here to speak on the fiscal year 2020 tax classification, either in favor or opposition? I am, sorry if you don't mind, I'm going to suspend this and come back. I just didn't know if anybody else wanted to. Give us about maybe five minutes. I'm going to suspend this at seven-twenty. Appreciate your patience. With that, I would like to open the council order two-zero-one-nine-dash-one-seven-eight, which is a utility grant of location, Mass Electric Emerald Street. Is there a representative in attendance? Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Does it grant a location? Second call, favor or opposition? Last and final call, anybody looking to speak in favor or opposition? Uh, same drill as before, there is sign-in sheets to weigh in and locate in the back of the room, so please, uh, feel free to use them as you wish. And with that, I will close the public hearing. We'll be back in three minutes. I would like to open the public hearing for council order two-zero-one-nine-dash-one-seven-nine, which is a utility grant of location, National Grid Gas on Felton Road. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor or opposition?
Well, I'm here to represent National Grid, so I'm obviously in favor, and we want to install, um, a hundred thirty feet-
Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, um, I don't live in Quincy, but my, um, Barbara Keller is my name from, uh, National Grid, and I live at one, um, five-eighty-one Ashmont Street in Dorchester.
Thank you, Barbara.
Uh, we want to, um, the National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet, more or less, of eight-inch gas main in Felton Street in Quincy, from the six-inch in, at, in the intersection of Billings Road and Felton Road northwesterly to the existing six-inch gas main at, um, number fifteen Felton Street. And this is a system reinforcement. So.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Second call, last and final call, anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Much like we've done before, there is sign-in sheets located at the back of the hall, so please feel free to use them as you wish. Thank you for coming, Barbara. And, uh, with that, we will call this public hearing closed, and resume the regularly scheduled city council meeting at seven-thirty, and then we will go back to the, uh, tax classification public hearing. So thank you for your, uh, for your patience. Good evening. Like to call the regularly scheduled Monday, December second, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Quincy City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Keane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci. President Crowell.
Present.
Eight members.
Eight members, and I do, just for the record, I did speak with Counselor Harris, and he is dealing with a death in the family, so let us all keep Counselor Harris and his family in our prayers. Um, if you would, please, councilors, rise and join me in a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers, those brave men and women who courageously defend our country. Should please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all kindly. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit, transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are going to do a little bouncing around this mor-, uh, this morning, this evening, uh, because we have multiple, uh, items going on- we have multiple items going on. So at this point, I'm gonna recess the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll go back into the public hearing portion for the fiscal year 2020 tax classification. Then we'll move to conclude the ordinance committee with the plastic bag conversation, then we'll come back into the regularly scheduled city council meeting. So with that, I'm going to recess the city council meeting, and call back into order the public comment period for the fiscal year 2020 tax classification. Thank you, sir, for your patience, and please, the floor is yours. And just for the record, your name and address. Thank you for your patience.
I'm Patrick Alexis. I'm at 72 Stedman Street in West Quincy. I'm not as versed in, know the, the tax rates and codes in and out, but what I do know is that each year, I feel the pressure of property taxes. Living with my wife, who's a full-time worker and mother, and myself, and, you know, we chose Quincy because we felt like Quincy was a nice working-class city, which, you know, I believe it is. But each year, my property taxes, it just feels like this, it's this big burden. And I'm a city employee myself, so I believe in, in, in paying taxes, that's not the issue. It's just, if, if my property taxes are based off of valuation, my income's not keeping up. Even if my, my home is worth a million dollars tomorrow, my income is not keeping up. It's not money I can put into my pocket to say, "Oh, yes, I can buy whatever wi, with it." So, I don't know if this is exactly the meaning for this, but if you can at least think about the people, and hopefully the burden of, of the taxes are not just on us, but I see a lot of high rises going up, a lot of buildings, a lot of condos, we have to spread this around. It can't just be on the backs of the people to, to, to carry everything, because it's, it's, it's hard. It's not easy.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else wishing to weigh in on the fiscal year 2020 tax classification? Okay, seeing that, I will close this public hearing. And we'll resume with ordinance committee.
Okay, I would like to call back into order the Monday, December 2nd, December 2nd meeting of the Quincy City Council Ordinance Committee at 7:35 PM. And last we left off, we were reviewing some amendments that were proposed by Counselor Palmucci, Mr. Clerk, and if you don't mind coming back up to the podium to answer any questions. Counselor Palmucci, I'm just gonna start by going back to you. The last amendment that you had proposed was adding the language around the host community agreement, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to add any other amendments before I go to any other councilors.
Oh, sorry.
No, I got it. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were talking to me. The Kroll and Palmucci kids have a snow day tomorrow, we were plodding some sledding. I have, so I have three amendments that I would offer. I'll offer them en masse, I guess, for the sake of brevity. They are adding the word "public" to the performance standard, section 6.10.4, section 1C, so that the line reads "any public playground." And then again, in the same location, in subsection E, so it, the sentence would read "any public facility which sponsors youth activities."
Madam Chair, if I could just check. I think Counselor Palmucci is looking to amend 6.10.4 performance standards, 1A, subsections C and E. Is that right, Counselor?
Mine doesn't have an A. It would be 6.10.4, 1C, and 1E. There's no A or B. 6.10.4, 1...
There's a 1A.
Oh, okay.
You're dented.
Yeah, I don't like indentations. When you're dented, you don't see it.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify what you wanted to show him, so under our paper here, where it says A, 1A, and then back over here, it says A, B, C, D, E, F, the following letters under 1A should be a subsection of the subsection 1A, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So amend that, and then 6.10.4 performance standards, section 2, which is the last paragraph on page 2, leading into page 3, at the end of that paragraph, adding the following language, "At least 60 days prior to the execution by the mayor, the host community agreement must be submitted to the city council for review." And I'll offer that as a single amendment, and then I'll offer the hours separately, because I think some folks may wanna have input on that.
Sure. So on those three amendments, does anybody have any questions or any comments? On just these three amendments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so those three amendments are passed.
Okay, and so next, I would say in perform, performance standards, section 11, the hours of operation, I would amend that section to allow for hours mon, all days of the week, hours 10 AM to 8 PM.
Okay, so this is, sorry, section 11, hours of operation. Okay, so this amendment is to amend the hours to be 10 AM to 8 PM. I mean, this is, again, just to clarify, seven days a week, correct?
Correct. And I'm open to discussion, I mean, I've been discussing with some of my colleagues over here as the meeting's been going on, I throw it out there on the table for discussion. Now, I'll just speak to what, why I think that makes more sense than what's there. I, as I said earlier, I think Saturday and Sundays, there should be longer hours, because that's when there's less of, you know, a traffic crunch. And again, I'm thinking from the perspective of Rashudi Drive, right, where we know there's already a marijuana establishment who is seeking, who will be, or would like to proceed to retail, recreational retail. So I'm thinking in terms of that Rashudi Drive intersection, and I want more people to go, you know, if there's 100 people going there a week, I would prefer more of those people go on Saturday and Sunday than any day during the week, especially during rush hour. So that's why I think, and I think 9 PM is too late. 9 PM is what the allowed hours are here, I think 9 PM's too late. I think 8 PM's a reasonable amount of time. I, I don't see why 11 AM is better than 10 AM in terms of opening, and I think it should be the same hour seven days a week. So, that's my pitch.
Thank you, Counselor, and I appreciate you allowing the opportunity to open it up for any questions from your colleagues. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that my colleagues might have. Counselor Honey?
Just to add on that, I was, I'm in agreement that the hours of operation should change maybe to lesser hours. In doing some of the research that I had with other communities that actually have opened this, they actually did have some problems with hours of operation, because they went to 10 PM, and they're trying to pull it back to 7 PM. And the reason why it became a problem is because of, there's just, it's very late in the evening to be, to be having that. So, so they are, one of the advices that was received from other community, another community that I was discussing this with, was to establish hours of operation until 7 PM across the board. I'm not opposed for 10 AM in the morning, but 7 PM is a closing, closing time potential, so rather than 8, maybe 7 PM. Because, and there's a couple of things that go with it, too, is it, they, the lines that they, they were proceeding, huge lines because of having online sales, and then also people that were getting into line, they need to have police details on duty, and several other things that are interrupted to the neighborhood, so just maybe taking that into consideration as well.
Thank you, Counselor Honey. So Counselor Palmucci, and from what I'm hearing from that, there is an amendment to your proposed amendment to go until 7 PM. Thank you, Counselor Honey. I didn't, one of my other colleagues had a question as well, so Counselor Kane?
To my amendment, so it would be 10 to, 10 to 7 PM. As Counselor Mahoney said, it's, we can always add it later if someone comes before us, once they're in operation and they need more hours, it's harder to take hours away from an establishment, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so currently, the amendment proposed is 10 AM to 7 PM. Counselor Kane?
I'm just trying to understand the logic a little bit better here. So if we're concerned about folks accessing this one particular facility...
I think any facility, but...
Well, but I think you're thinking with this one in mind, as opposed to anywhere else, so there's two sides to it, is, you know, we're trying to allow businesses to operate and function, right? And so you wanna give them proper time to do so, so that they're making some money, and then we're able to in turn make some money, because this, we are taxing them to do so, and there's a 3% tax that we're talking about. So, I guess limiting those hours to 7 PM doesn't make much sense to me, because I, I have an understanding that the people of all walks of life are gonna enjoy this type of facility. It's not just a stereotypical negative ne'er-do-well. So, you know, folks who, I would assume are parents, who have to do things with their children, you know, who might wanna enjoy a facility, might not have time before 7 PM, I would assume. So, why 10 makes sense? I, I don't know why 10 makes sense as opposed to 11, but I would think that you'd wanna keep it open to at least 8 or 9 for, for folks. So, I don't, I don't know if you're wedded to this, but I, I don't think that there's any...
I'm completely open to it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any rational thinking to 10 to 7 for hours of operation, or to trying to keep this type of thing only busy during the weekend. I think you're gonna end up having more of a cluster situation if you're trying to keep the operations open longer on the weekends than you are during the week. So, I, I don't know if I'm making, I would be potentially, if people would be supportive, I'd be potentially making amendment to support longer hours, which would be 10 to, 10 to 8 or 10 to 9, but I don't know what, where the wind's blowing today, or how people are...
So I'm open to anything, I just really, the, the thing I feel the most strongly about is, so right now, as written, it's Monday through Saturday, 11 AM to 9 PM, and Sunday, 12 PM to 6 PM. I, I just feel really strongly about that Sunday. It makes no sense to me why, where we would limit the hours on Sunday when I think that would be a, a day that folks would be able to get up there, and there's less of a traffic, traffic burden throughout the city. So I'm really open to anything.
I mean, liquor stores are similarly open, you know, some, you know, supermarkets are open later, so I, I don't, I don't, I look at them the same. They're, they're places where you're, you're picking up substances, for lack of a better term, for recreational use, so...
I've seen that, I've seen disordinance that have specifically tie it to liquor stores. I've seen a couple of ordinance that say same operate, operating hours as...
I would say, I would say we go with that. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Sorry, sorry to interrupt both of you, but so to that...
I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I'm gonna withdraw my motion to amend entirely.
Okay.
And then I think Counselor Kane's gonna offer an amendment to tie it to the liquor establishment operating hours in the city.
Sure. So then I'll make an amendment to section 6.10.4, section 2, oh, I'm sorry, so section...
11.
11. I guess whatever language would say that we can tie it to liquor store. So, hours of operation of licensed marijuana retailers shall be...
Restricted to the same hours of operation?
Yeah, restrict, yeah, thank you. Restricted to the same hours of operation as, as liquor establishments.
What time, what time do you package yours, folks?
Okay, and then that'll go straight through to the end, where it says no later than 6, no later than 6 PM, so then that section will be cut out, and then after, so hours of operation of licensed marijuana retailers shall be restricted to the same operating hours as liquor establishments, licensed marijuana retailers who violate this provision, the rest of that will stay in. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so there is an amendment now to, to the section 11 here for hours of operation. Does anybody have any discussion or questions or comments? Counselor Kroll?
I'm sorry, I missed this, I apologize. What is the designated or specific times of hours of operation for a liquor store?
That's a great question.
Madam Clerk could probably clarify that.
Madam Clerk, do you know what our current hours of operations are for liquor establishments?
9 AM to 11 PM, and noon to, I believe it's 8 on Sunday.
So 9 AM to 11 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12 PM to 8 PM on Sundays.
To 11. So what, are you...
Yes.
So just on that, on that motion, the, just the thinking is, yeah, I suppose if, you know, the sort of first mover stores, there's probably gonna be a lot of interest and enthusiasm over time, I'm sure that will win out, but, I mean, we've got liquor stores all over the city that see voluminous traffic at many different times of day, I don't see the difference. You know, especially again, this is, you know, we're trying to be, I guess, more friendly for a business. I mean, I understand the, the opposite side thinking, where people have their own perceptions of whatever this substance might be, but, you know, we are mandated to allow this, so we might as well...
Yeah.
Be friendly about it, so that the city can stand to benefit from a profitable business.
I could check in with staff, just, I just...
I appreciate it, we're just trying to clarify, I think on Sundays, it might be 11 to 8 PM and not the noon to 8, is it 11 to 8, or?
Yes.
Okay, so again, just to clarify again, so if we're, if we're going with this amendment to change the hours of operation, where it says hours of operations of licensed marijuana retailers shall be restricted to the same operating hours as liquor establishments, those operating hours would be Monday through Saturday, currently, Monday through Saturday from 9 AM to 11 PM, and then on Sundays from 11 AM to 8 PM.
And that doesn't mean that a store has to operate within those hours, people have different operational capacities all over the city for different types of...
They do, absolutely. And, and you see some liquor stores go from 12 to 6 on Sunday. It's, it's totally up to them, and when they come before us, they, they put their hours of operation out there, and if it suits the community, then that's...
And that's part of their proposal, so they have to operate within those hours, is what we're trying to establish here.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody, I'm sorry, Counselor Kroll, you had, did you have another clarifying question, or was that the only?
Well, I just wanted to know, I mean, for me particularly, as I look at sort of the zoning tables, I know that, you know, one of the areas could be down in Quincy Point, that, that does a butt residential neighborhoods, and whereas, like, I've been following this sort of rollout, if you will, from a Brookline perspective for, for some time now, I guess. I think I'm more in the start-slow camp, and the reason I say that is, I kinda look at what they're going through right now, in the sense of really taking it to a whole different conversation in the context of, you know, appointment only. So, there has been noticeable increases to, you know, traffic and stuff like that, whereas this is a new business model for the city, and I understand the voters have spoken, so it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. My logic is, I just, I would feel more comfortable seeing sort of how it rolls out, so, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Does any other councilors have any questions or comments on this particular amendment before we move forward?
Could I just add that? I just looked up Vermont's hours, which is the only active marijuana dispensary in the city. Their hours are Monday through Friday, 10 to 7, Saturday, 10 to 6, and Sunday, 11 to 5.
What, can you just repeat that? Sorry.
Yeah, it's Monday through Friday, 10 to 7, 10 AM to 7 PM, Saturday, 10 AM to 6 PM, and Sunday, 11 AM to 5 PM. Which, which I'm gonna say is, those aren't, I don't believe those are the hours that we put in the medical marijuana ordinance. I think those are more restrictive than what we allow, what we allowed for in the medical marijuana ordinance. So, just to kinda support what Counselor Kane was saying, just because we say a store can be open till 11, doesn't mean they will be open till 11. I think, and I also think that a, a big part of the marijuana rollout statewide has been about equity, you know, for communities that have been disparately impacted by drug abuse and the war on drugs. Quincy is one of those communities. I'm in favor of being more lenient with hours. You know, I'm always a, I come from a philosophy of, I trust somebody until they give me reason not to trust them anymore. I treat people the way I would want to be treated, and that's how I've engaged with Vermont, they've been a great partner with the city and with me, in terms of any problems that have occurred, and I would expect anybody else opening up a marijuana establishment will be similarly eager to please the city and work with us. If there was a problem that people were making too much noise because it was open too late, whether it's at the shipyard or Rashudi Drive, I expect that, that those operators will work with the city. Because our, our host agreement only lasts five years, right? So there's a five-year window here. You have to renegotiate that host agreement every five years. So we could say after five years, we don't want you anymore, because you've been a pain in the ass, and you haven't done anything we've asked you to do, you know, to, to mitigate some of the negative impacts you've had in the community, so we're done with you, we don't have to sign a, a host community agreement with them after five years, so. I'm, I'm supportive of that, I think it's very... I think it's very similar to a liquor store, the pros and cons. And when we restrict things to certain hours, we're... I think we take our own personal kind of experience that, okay, we work jobs 9:00 to 5:00. That's not how everybody in the community works, you know. Somebody works an overnight shift, and, you know, whatever their life brings, you don't know. So, I'd rather be more open than less open when it comes to this. So, I'll support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, any other questions or comments on this particular amendment for the hours of operation? Counselor McCarthy?
Well, just a quick comment. I just... Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was all set with the 10:00 to 8:00 o'clock. I thought that was a good way to start. I know this is, and I know the point that Counselor Kane's making, in fairness, it was something that narrowly got approved here in Quincy, 51 to 49% a few years ago. It could have been the other way. I know there's a lot of people in Quincy that aren't thrilled with this at all. And I know it's something that is on the books, and, like I said, it passed 51 to 49. I look at it more like taking baby steps in regards, because there's gonna only be one location right now for a while. And, you know, I'm pretty sure they're gonna take full advantage of the hours and be open as much as possible because they're trying to make a dollar. And I totally understand that. But I do have reservations on that amount of time right off the bat. I know it's something we might be able to come back and relook if we think we have a problem, but I was set on the hours that we're in here. This is just my own comment, set on the hours that we're in here to start off with, instead of going right to the full-blown, all-day marijuana dispensary being open. I thought it was more of a conservative, practical look at something that we haven't had here ever. So, I really, just to add in, I want to commend Counselor Palmucci's due diligence, going through it, adding in the state legislation with the... Well, actually, the comment that Mr. Durkin made about the state legislation with the 500 linear, I know we talked about that, but Counselor Palmucci with the 60-day notice that the council knows something's gonna get dropped, particularly into their ward, so that they know that something's coming down the pike, and the other changes that Counselor Palmucci made. But the hours bother me a little bit. I said, I don't want to be unfair to a new business that's gonna hit the streets, but it's something we've never had before, and I look at it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Okay. Before we move forward with this amendment, are there any other questions or comments on this particular amendment? No? Okay. So, Counselor Kane, this is a motion to approve the amendment that you're proposing to change the hours of operation to match liquor stores, which would be, again, currently as it stands, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then 11:00 to 8:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And on that, I think, just from the discussion here, sorry, I would like to do a roll call for this to see if the amendment is going to move. So, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Kroll?
No.
Counselor DeBona?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Hughes?
Um, yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
No.
Counselor McCarthy?
No.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Chairman Liang?
Yes. Okay. So, that motion passes. Counselor Palmucci, were there any other amendments that you were looking at? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, with that, I want... Yes, sorry. Counselor Kane?
The one thing that I don't see in here, and please point it out if there is, are there any limiting factors? Are there any limits to the number of licenses that are granted for a city or town?
Yeah. We have in here... Let me see if I can find it. We have it in subsection 7 of...
Oh, it's just by spatial... It's just by space?
Yeah. It's subsection 7. It limits it to 20% of the number of licenses that are issued under General Laws, Chapter 138. So, 20% of the number of liquor stores. I think the city clerk will verify that we have 35 liquor stores, and so 20% of that would be 7.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Okay. So, to that, and there were other amendments that Mr. Durkin had discussed when we had first started the ordinance committee meeting, and I want to open up the conversation to my colleagues for any questions or comments on the red line and blue line amendments that Mr. Durkin had spoke to. So, oh, sorry. Counselor Mahoney had her hand up first. Counselor Mahoney?
Actually, I did... Before we go into the red lines, I did have another question in regards to separate, if I could, before we go into the red line. So, in regards to, and I think there's a section here, and I... Forgive me when I... Because I had it marked, and now I can't find it. For health or, let's see, prohibited signage, just one. So, in... So, some of my research that I was doing, and I was also doing a lot of research in regards to what's happening in Brookline right now, and their hours for operation were until 10:00 o'clock, and it was in a section of the city that is kind of off of Route 9, but it does back up. It's an old... It was an old bank, and it does back up into a neighborhood, which, again, these are... We're restricting the designation of how far they can be from a neighborhood. So, but one of the problems that they're running into, and I'm not sure where we would put it into this ordinance, is the, you know, whether or not the number of people that are lining up, if there is in need of a police detail, if it goes in... If it's allowed to be open till 11:00 o'clock, which I wasn't in favor of, the noise, the garbage that comes with it, who's in charge of those things? Because they're not on the premise of... Because the lines are going that far down, that they're not on the premise of the actual facilities, but they're actually in the sides and the neighborhoods. So, I guess I'm asking you, where would that fit into this ordinance?
Well, apart from the issue of a marijuana establishment being in close proximity to a neighborhood, I want to emphasize again that cities and towns have an added safeguard, and that safeguard is that marijuana businesses must enter into a host-community agreement with a city or town. And I think those kinds of details, as far as a police presence to maintain order and that sort of thing, that can be worked out in a host-community agreement. And I think it would be something that would be advisable to be worked out in those agreements.
Okay. It's the public health and safety requirements was where I was looking at it for this. Because one of the other problems that they're having in Brookline is because of the length of the lines that... And the lack of access to facilities that they had people using neighborhoods to... They were going to the bathroom in people's neighborhoods, and they brought in porta-potties. Last thing I would want to see is in Rashudi Drive, porta-potties. So, I guess I'm bringing this up because this is learnings that we are having from other communities that are going through this. And, like I said, the trash and the things that are going on. So, that's... It says right here for, you know, your public safety requirements and calavations for process for storing marijuana. But I also have the health concerns for that, and you're saying that that would be something that would be taken up in... When they actually go to zoning, is that where that would come in? Where would they... Where would this come into play? When you're saying that it would be taken care of because they'd have a house?
The host-community agreement is a document that has to be negotiated and executed, negotiated between the city's designee, in this case, it's the mayor, and the marijuana establishment. So, I would just suggest to you, Counselor, and all the counselors, that those sorts of details can be worked out in a host-community agreement. And keep in mind that just because we have an ordinance doesn't mean that other rules and laws and local ordinances don't apply. I mean, if people are doing things they ought not to be doing while standing in line waiting to get into a marijuana business, that can be monitored by the police department without having anything in an ordinance.
No, I understand that it can be monitored. I'm saying that when we're trying to establish the ordinance for what's gonna happen here in Quincy, that we should, you know, do it with a lens of really looking at things. It's not to say that we're not... I understand that we're a yes community and that this is coming. But I also think it's our obligation to make sure that when we're looking at that, we're looking at this and how it's gonna fit into our community, that we're also asking the right questions to make sure that we're protecting ourselves in the ordinance that we're creating and being conservative about the things that we're doing so that we're in control of it from the start. And then as we build the relationship with those businesses and see the impact into the community, we can loosen those regulations rather than start with the door wide open and then go back and try to figure out what other ordinances protect the areas that maybe the businesses are going into. Because I do agree that when they first open in communities, they become... They're somewhat of a novelty. They're not here yet. So, when they do come, it's a... You know, people are interested, they're going to check it out, and eventually, maybe it will quell itself, and it will quiet itself down on its own. But we're not there yet. This is a new... This is relatively new to most communities in Massachusetts, as it's a new law, and we're a yes community. And as Counselor McCarthy had mentioned, we were 51-49, and we owe it to the neighbors that are going to be near the established locations. And there are gonna be... Rashudi Drive does have residential neighbors that are up there, and I just want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration. I personally don't think I'd be wanting to spend that much money to live up in Rashudi Drive to come down the street to see potentially the issues that they're having in Brookline. So, I think it's well within our needs to be able to discuss that.
Yeah. Your points are well-taken, Counselor. I would just say that, you know, when we draft an ordinance, we can't possibly envision every eventuality.
No, I understand that. I understand that, and I certainly am not suggesting that we prolong things until we actually predict every single possible nuance of what we need to do. Like I said, this is something that's new that most communities are going through, and all we have to do is look to our neighbors who have said, yes, there's only a handful of communities that have already have opened established facilities, and we can learn from what they're doing and some of the problems they're having. I mean, this was... In Brookline, this is in an area that's pretty well-established and further away, but their second location that they were thinking about doing, it was closer to Coolidge Corner, and they were having some problems. And they were trying to do it by appointment only. And they are having some issues that are going through. And we are going to have more than one that opens. So, and this is an ordinance that's gonna be a blanket ordinance for not just the first one that's gonna open, but for all that are gonna come to Quincy as well. So, we don't want to come back and keep trying to tighten the knot. We want to actually make sure we're coming out of the gates in a correct manner.
Counselor, you had mentioned the possibility of perhaps having... Requiring a police detail to maintain order at some of these, and that's something that maybe other counselors would be receptive to, but I'm not sure that it would be necessary or...
I'm not saying that it has to be in the ordinance. What I'm talking about are these are things that we have to take a lens to, that there's a health issue that was established in Brookline when Brookline opened up, and that became a health issue because of some of the things that were happening, and they had to go back and revisit it. I'm suggesting that this is gonna be our first, and I'm suggesting that there will be lines, and I'm suggesting that we do need to look at those things, and what are we going to... What is the requirements that we're going to put upon the businesses that are gonna open to make sure that we're protecting the area and the neighborhoods that are up there? Not necess... The police detail is something, as you said, is in other areas that we can make required by that. I just wanted to know where it would fit into this.
Yeah. There is another provision in this ordinance, Counselor, that provides for the city's health department to promulgate regulations, local regulations, to address health concerns that may crop up. So, that perhaps is an area where they could develop regulations in that regard. And again, the host-community agreement is key here because every community has a different character, different needs, different desires, and the host-community agreement allows a local community to address the specific needs that Quincy has, you know, with regard to a particular establishment in a particular location in the city.
And you said that that was something that'd be worked out with the mayor's office or who...
The mayor's office, under this ordinance, he would be the designated contact for... To negotiate a host-community agreement with a prospective marijuana business.
I could just interject, I apologize, but with the amendment that we had also moved on to make sure that it's presented to the city council for review as well.
So, that's what I was gonna say, that is covered by Counselor Palmucci's amendment, that if something like that was to come forward, that it would... The city council, or more importantly, the ward counselor who represents that area that this establishment would go into would be aware of potentially the house agreement that's happening, and be able to put their two cents into it to make sure that it's protecting their area.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Palmucci?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to that point. So, there are 31 marijuana establishments that have been permitted in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, been open for roughly a year or so, the bulk of them. Only NEDA in Brookline has had the kind of problems that NEDA in Brookline has had. There hasn't been these same problems, and I share the concern that Counselor Mahoney has. But I just want to be very clear that if we had a problem with dozens of people defecating on the sidewalk on Rashudi Drive, I would immediately...
Language?
Immediately seek to invoke Section 9 of this ordinance, which says, "License marijuana establishments which cultivate, manufacture, or process marijuana in which present a public nuisance to the city or its inhabitants are subject to special permit revocation or suspension by the city." So, if we had those problems, I would immediately seek to have their license suspended or revoked, depending on the severity of it. As it relates to... And we were, I think, the second or third community to have a medical marijuana facility, and there's been very little, if any, problems as a result of that facility, as a result of the ordinance that these bodies, the ordinances that this body put in place to regulate those which were similar to this. And then lastly, I would just point out that... So, we've only gone through this process once at this point with a marijuana establishment seeking to open a recreational retail site, and that's with Ermont. And I can speak to my experience and my experience with this administration. We negotiated a host agreement together, and we didn't negotiate that host agreement and really start to finalize it until after we had a community meeting with the folks who were most concerned. We had a public meeting. I think you were there, actually, Counselor Mahoney. I think you were there, and Counselor DeBona was there as well. We had a meeting on it, and I think Counselor Liang was there as well. All the large counselors kicking in there. But we had a discussion, and we took into consideration with the residents who live on Rashudi Drive, just as if it was in the shipyard. I fully trust that Counselor Kroll will take into consideration the residents' concerns there and craft a host-community agreement that seeks to mitigate any potential negative impacts. One specific impact that wouldn't apply to the shipyard, perhaps, but certainly applies to Rashudi Drive that we put in place as part of the host-community agreement is folks coming from the city getting across that highway off-ramp. And what we're having them do is put in a... Required a state police detail to be at that intersection during peak rush hours, if they're open. And that's to help mitigate any traffic, well, not traffic, but any safety concerns related to excess traffic that would be going up Rashudi Drive because of that. So, I think this ordinance, it does a good job creating a framework, but with any framework, there are going to be minor tweaks here and there that can be worked within that framework, such as requiring details or, you know, I know one of the problems with NEDA in Brookline was the long lines that they were having and all the problems that the long lines bring, the noise, the other issues. That's something that I fully expected we would be able to work out with the particular establishments and the operators moving forward. So, certainly worth noting and thinking about, but I think what we have here is a good framework that puts in place some core values, and more specifically, and more importantly, which we haven't really gotten into here, but is where they're allowed, right? we haven't really gotten into here, but is where they're allowed, right? Is where they're allowed. And they're not going to be in predominantly single-family neighborhoods, they're not going to be near schools, they're not going to be near playgrounds. I think that's the most important takeaway from here. And this ordinance gives the city, I mean, as a lawyer, public nuisance to the city or its inhabitants is a very, very gray area. We can interpret that as aggressively, or as passively as we want to, and as the situation would require. So if they cause a public nuisance to the city or its inhabitants, we can revoke or suspend their license. To me, that's all the enforcement we really need to ensure compliance with whatever problems come up. So I'll be, I'll be supporting this. I would move for adoption of the amendments proposed by Mr. Durkin, and then I'll move approval afterwards.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to accept this ordinance, for positive recommendation for this ordinance with the amendments presented by Mr. Durkin, just to clarify, those are the red line and blue line amendments in the ordinance before us, correct, Counselor?
Yes.
And does this also then include the other amendments that we had moved on?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a proposal to have a positive recommendation for this ordinance with all amendments discussed and passed here this evening. Okay. Before we move to, you know, do a roll call with this, I just want to take an opportunity to again thank my colleagues for this. I mean, you know, all of you who joined us this evening, this is a very robust conversation, but this is one of many that we've had in the last year and a half. You know, there's a reason for that, right? This is the, again, decision for us to figure out how we're going to do this, not the if. And it's really important that we make sure we put our best foot forward, do our research. We had the State's Cannabis Control Commission come down, we spoke with a member of the Quincy Police Department, we had a public meeting here, we had a community meeting out in Counselor Pomucci's ward. So there's been a lot of work and deliberation done by my colleagues, and I just want to thank all of you for your thoughtful consideration in the last year and a half, as well as this evening. So with that, I want to thank you for your work tonight, Mr. Durkin, I want to thank you for your work on this as well. And I just want to stress how, you know, it's not, it's not easy to put this document together, right? We have to work within the confines of what the state and the Cannabis Control Commission has put in front of us. And I, you know, this document, my colleagues, you know, have been working off this document from the Cannabis Control Commission as well, states, on the first page, we cannot impose, or we have to impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of marijuana establishments, provided that they are not unreasonably impractical and not in conflict with state law and regulation. So given those confines, again, we have to approach the how we're doing this really carefully, and I want to thank my colleagues for taking the time to make sure that, you know, we are doing that. So with that, on the motion, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Crowell.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Liang.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
May Command of chair, members of the council.
Okay, counselors, so thank you for your patience on this this evening. We're going to move to the last item in ordinance committee, which is Council Order 2019-125, ordinance amending Title 18 Environmental Protection, adding Chapter 18.30, disposable plastic retail shopping bags. This order was brought before us by a joint ordinance presented by the mayor's office and Counselor Pomucci. I want to start by saying thank you for bringing this to us, and I want to thank my colleagues again for making sure we're doing the due diligence leading up to this conversation this evening for this matter before. So with that, I'm going to defer to Counselor Pomucci because he did introduce this to us, if you have any questions or comments. But I will just say for folks here this evening, that this presentation with any questions that you might have will be directed to Mr. Walker in the mayor's office. So with that, Counselor Pomucci?
Thank you. I, I really have nothing. The ordinance speaks for itself. The only thing that I'd speak to is, I think, I certainly got emails and phone calls, and I'm sure other counselors did as well, from folks who wanted us to, to add in, what's it, paper bags as well, to ban those. And I'll just speak to that. What I said to those folks and what I'll say publicly now is, you know, baby steps. Let's get rid of the plastic bags first, and then come make an argument about paper bags, and we'll, we'll see what happens. But like I said, I think it speaks for itself, so I would simply move approval, and then open it up for debate, folks. Or move positive recommendation.
And to move the ordinance as it stands in front of us, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
No. Okay. I, I just have one amendment I'd like to change on this. And so at the bottom of page two, it says, "This ordinance shall take effect 60 days after its enactment." I just want to put a hard date on that, so that, you know, us as counselors can speak to our residents, and residents and folks watching at home know when that hard start date is going to be. So 60 days, I would like to have this, say, "This ordinance shall take effect March 1st, 2020." And again, this is an effort to just make sure that we don't have a rolling 60 days, we have an actual start date for this ordinance to take effect. So that's an amendment that I would like to propose. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on that? I welcome them. No? Okay, so all is in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so does anybody else have any other questions or comments on the ordinance as it stands? Okay? Do I have a motion to move positive recommendation? Oh, Counselor Pomucci did, right? Okay. As amended. So Counselor Pomucci, you have a motion on the floor to accept this with positive recommendation as amended. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Crowell.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
No.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Pomucci.
Yes.
Chairman Liang.
Yes.
7-1.
Thank you. Okay, so just to clarify, the orders before us this evening were 2018-027, amending the City of Quincy zoning ordinance, adding Section 6.10 marijuana establishments. That had a positive recommendation out of committee, but I just want to let folks know for a matter of order, this still does have to go to Planning Board to get any last questions or comments from them. So now that we move this out of committee, it will go to Planning for approval, hopefully by this week, and at our next council meeting, we can bring it out for full approval on the council. Counselor Pomucci?
What, so what's the status with the Planning Board? They have 60 days to act on, on any ordinance change that we send them. This has been kicking around, I don't know, what's the date that it came in?
Year and a half.
June 17th. So we're well past the, the 60 days they had. What's, what's going on with the Planning Board? Does Madam Clerk, Clerk of Committees, I don't know, who would know that?
Maybe the mayor's.
Jimmy, come on up. Thanks. That's why somebody a lot smarter than us a long time ago required that you guys be here at these meetings. I forgot.
Through you, I, I spoke this afternoon with the solicitor, Durkin, and the question was, you know, this was presented to the Planning Board a year and a half ago. They heard it, they did not act on it at that time. I guess it's expected that it'll go back before the board now that there's a lot more form and.
Are you talking about the marijuana one?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. I was talking about the plastic bag one.
Haven't, that has not gone before the Planning Board.
No, I apologize. It's the marijuana one that was in front of us for the last year and a half, but needs, even though it came out of positive recommendation this evening, it does still need to go in front of Planning Board. Plastic bag does not. Plastic bag does not.
Neither one of them have to go back, because they're both 60 days, older than 60 days. So their, their window for comment has closed. If the Planning Board doesn't choose to comment within 60 days, we shouldn't keep asking them, "Do you want to comment? Do you want to comment?" I trust the planning director and the planning board know what we send them, and if they had something to add, the purpose is, if they want to add something or object to something, which they have in the past, they have an opportunity to do so. We've given them that opportunity. I think we should move on with these ordinances. They've had them long enough, they wanted to weigh in, I trust they would have. Unless Mr. Fatsy says, "No, please, we've been really busy, we want to get into this and, and weigh in," then, you know, I would defer to them respectfully if they want to weigh in, but I feel like we got the answer.
There was no finding, there was, there was no action take when it was presented to the Planning Board, nor was there a need for them to act on it. But in the event that there was an ask of this board to, excuse me, of the council to run it by the Planning Board, we'd be happy to reassess it, but that's.
Okay.
That's on, on you guys.
Okay, thank you.
No, I appreciate that, and I think, I think, you know, given that, and given the timeframe that has been given into this, we can certainly bring all three orders out for a vote this evening on the full body of the council. So with that, I'd like to close the ordinance committee meeting at 8:20 PM.
I'd like to call back to order the regularly scheduled city council meeting regarding the fiscal year 2020 tax classification. Before I open up to the floor, we're joined here this evening by the Director of Municipal Finance, Mark Kavanaugh. Mr. Kavanaugh, welcome, sir, and I believe you have some comments that you wanted to share with the body, so the floor is yours.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And counselors, hello, staff. This is the fiscal year 2020. Time flies. Financial presentation.
I'm sorry, Counselor.
Do we have something before us on this, or just to watch the screen?
I believe it's just a slide deck, Mr. Kavanaugh, or is it, do you have any collateral to pass out, or it's just on the screen? That was a question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, we don't have enough.
I am, yeah.
Should be on the screen as well. All set? The tax levy is increasing five and a half percent to $241 million point nine. It's a 12 and a half million dollar increase. Both the residential rate and the commercial rate are going slightly down to 1243 and 1284 respectively. The average single-family residence bill will increase this year to $271, increase up $271, and the average bill is up to $6,126. We have several comps for you, some year-over-year, some by community. The average single-family home is assessed at $492,000 this year, which is up from last year's $466. That's an increase of 5.6%. And what's interesting, actually, it's, it's amazing, just six short years ago during the 2014 tax rate recap, we had just pushed through the $300,000 mark. And here, six years later, we're, we're looking at effectively average single-family home price of $500,000. Comparisons from other South Shore communities, I'll, I'll lead that by saying, prior to last year, we had tried to select cities that had similar economics as Quincy, home values, proximity to Boston, inflation, housing sales, and so forth, and it was a little more difficult for people to relate to. So last year, Eric came up with the idea to go with all South Shore communities, and it was very well received. People had a lot more familiarity with the cities surrounding us. The average single-family tax bill in 2019 was, for Quincy, was $5,855. You can see how that highlighted green compares to the rest of the South Shore communities. The average bill was about $6,385 for 2019. And you'll see this trend in, in other comps. Quincy is largely in the middle grouping. We're not, we're not at the far end, we're not at the exclusive community end, and we're not at the lower end. You'll find us in the middle most often, sometimes a little ahead, sometimes a little bit behind the middle. The next comparison is the average single-family home tax bill with an average Quincy home value, which is, as we said, this year is $492,000, so let's call it $500,000. That's how that would compare to other South Shore communities. You see Quincy highlighted in green, that would be $6,126 for the average single-family home. A value, a home with the value of that, $500,000, if it were in, say, Duxbury sliding a little bit to the right, the taxes would be over $7,000. The average for all South Shores, $7,400 for a $500,000 home. Sliding farther over, you see Norwell, you see Plymouth, $500,000 home in those communities, over $8,000 for a tax bill. Another comp, new by Eric, I just saw this for the first time the other day, it's the story of the mountain. Last year, Quincy had a fifth, was in the 51st percentile for average single-family home tax bills. What that means is about half the communities, and this one statewide, had tax bills above that, and about half had tax bills below that. So we truly are in the middle when you look statewide for an average single-family home. Excess levy capacity, which is always a fan favorite. Excess levy capacity is the amount of money a municipality is under the prop two and a half levy limit. And incidentally, this is, we're coming on the 40th anniversary of Proposition Two and a Half, which unfortunately, I am old enough to remember being voted in. A municipality cannot spend over the levy limit without voter approval. This is commonly referred to as an override or a tax override, and you'll see communities have to get into that situation. If they have emergency expenditures, maybe a fire engine goes, a school roof, and they have to do something very quickly, if they don't have excess capacity, they have to arrange an override and get the vote by the people. Quincy will remain a top-five community for excess levy capacity with a projection, projected capacity of over $34.5 million. And this represents taxes that the city could have raised but declined to. Looking at our financials, they're not, they're not issued yet, but we have the draft financials from Powers and Sullivan that we've been working with. The city's going to fiscal, going to finish this year with a fiscal surplus of about $2.5 million. And this surplus is in part what is allowing the city to provide tax bill relief to homeowners. The city maintained a double-A-plus credit rating from Standard &amp; Poor's. We also have a stable outlook from Standard &amp; Poor's. They typically will look two years down the road, measure us by dozens of factors, room occupancy, stores opening, businesses, employment, and the outlook looks stable, which is, of course, where we want to be. Standard &amp; Poor's cites strong fiscal management, diverse tax base as major factors in the high credit rating. By the way, that credit rating is the second highest credit rating possible. Standard &amp; Poor's has 10 different categories for rating cities. We're second from the top. Tops is AAA, we remain at double-A+, and the outlook, again, as I said, is stable. Before you tonight are several council orders, beginning really with the Free Cash certification by DOR received last month, and I'd like to thank Susan for all her hard work on that, as always, along with Eric and our outside accountants. We are certified at $8,070,089. Of that, and these we can obviously discuss in detail, we have 2.9 million being taken from Free Cash and appropriated to reduce the tax levy and lower taxes. In addition, we have an appropriation from prior year's purchase orders, unspent purchase orders, that we've taken, and again, want to, want to use that, 1.815 million, to reduce the tax levy and lower taxes. There are other isolated council orders regarding the community preservation votes and funding, as well as the DIF orders, taking care of DIF financing. But for a moment, we'll look at the stabilization appropriations. We have an appropriation of $1,034,018 to the stabilization fund. That would raise the level of this fund to $12.5 million. Within two years of coming here in 2011, that stabilization fund was under $1 million. It was $900,000, which is not all that long ago. Well, maybe it is. The OPEB trust, which didn't exist that many years ago, we're going to make a contribution of $1,034,018, bringing the trust fund balance to $3,139,000. It's not a lot in the big picture, but it's a lot to the rating agencies and the process we're going through to continue to put money aside. We also have a contribution to the inclement weather fund of $517,000, timely night to discuss that. That'll bring the total amount as we go into this winter with our appropriation of 2.7 million, the additional $500,000 being appropriated tonight, if you, if you so vote, would give us a balance of 3.2 million going into the winter. That's more than about $1 million we've needed the last two years. Last two years have been pretty mild with a snowfall of 40 and 46 inches. So who knows what we're in store for, but that shores up that fund. And that's it for the formal presentation. We're open for questions. As I said, Eric's worked extensively with Jim Powers on a lot of these issues, as well as with the Assessor's Office, so tonight he's my left-hand man, but if I can't answer it, Eric probably can.
Before I open up to the floor, a couple of things I noticed. Right out of the gate with the Free Cash certification, does that number seem traditionally higher?
Does the, oh, the Free Cash?
The aggregate?
That's the highest, that's the highest we've had since I've been here.
Yeah.
Just a product of how we've done financially during the year, there's really. Just a product of how we've done financially during the year, there's really, literally dozens of factors that go into that. But it's basically, you're taking all of the city's revenue, subtracting out the expenses that had to be paid, but you also factor in accounts payable that erode on the accrual method, as well as accounts receivable for money that's gonna be owed. You have to account for fund deficits. If there are any deficits, you're penalized by DOR for those. And there's about, I've found, about twenty-two different footnotes that can affect you if you don't take care of each and every one.
It just caught my eye. I just noticed it to be...
It's a complicated process, but yeah, we came out very well this year.
From a historical perspective, yeah, the number seems to be larger. You know, the other observation is it looks like we're actually looking to adhere to our financial policies by taking chunks of that and putting it into essentially the formal document that this body had adopted, geez, I don't know, two years ago, two and a half years ago? Particularly with the OPEB.
I began researching and writing that, looking at other cities around two thousand and fourteen, because that's when we had first heard we need to institute those. Then we had the winter of two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, great designs kind of get put to the wayside to deal with thirteen point seven million dollar snow expense. But I believe they were instituted in sixteen, the year after the storm. And we were faithful, putting the money away by the formula, as we were encouraged to do by the rating agencies. We ran into a little bit of a problem last year with the decision on the police patrolman's arbitration case. We could have stuck to the letter of the law, put the money in free cash. We would have had to have turned right around and asked to withdraw the money from free cash, which is ill-advised. So, we put the money direct to the back pay on the police patrolman, so we didn't adhere to the formula that year. It's a benchmark.
What I'm saying now, we are. And again, I mean, I read these credit analyst reports, and the consistent thing that I see over time is, you know, the one...
Credit for raising the reserves up to a very high level. Our total fund reserve, after these financial statements come out, will probably be a little over twenty-seven million, which is a far cry from where we've been in recent years, and begins to approach triple-A territory. We're not gonna be triple-A anytime soon, but they wanted us to get about thirty million in reserves. We're gonna be about twenty-seven point four.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of actually committing to, you know, the deposit, if you will, into the other post-employment benefits, that seems to be a consistent thing that the analysts go to as an area for improvement, so I'm happy to see that. And, you know, my understanding of this evening is, you know, we talk about the tax rate, which we'll get into with the individual agenda items, but, you know, the majority of the work, at least in my mind, is done. When you talk about effecting a tax rate, it's done at budget time, and it's done, you know, with ancillary requests that come before the body. So, in my mind, the work's done in the middle.
Right. I think a lot of times, some of the discussion around tonight filters back to spending decisions, but really, this is the night to pay the bills.
Right, and that's an individual choice that everybody around the well's faced with once you present a spending decision, right? And we voted up, we voted down.
Those start in the spring.
Yep. Questions from the councilors, Palmucci? I know you, during the public call-up period, did you still have anything, or are you? Yep, would you like to?
You don't have to get up and answer questions, that's fine.
I'll get up.
So, sorry.
You got anything to say?
So, I just wanted to go through, you know, what Mark and Brad were just saying, you know, now's the time to pay the bills, right? It's not about spending. We've already spent the money. Now it's about paying for the bill, and it's not even really about paying for the bill, because the bill's gonna get paid.
Tonight, we're voting on what, right, what portion of the tax levy, the residential is going to make up and the commercial is going to make up.
Right, so, it's not even whether we pay the bill, because the bill's getting paid, it's who is going to pay the bulk of the bill. And I just wanted to lay it out pretty clearly what the options are here. There's really, there's two ranges, right? And then anything in the middle, but I'll take the two extremes. So, our two options are that we charge a residential tax rate of fourteen dollars and twenty cents per one thousand dollars of value, right?
Correct.
That's one of the options, and that would be the full tax rate without any split between commercial and residential.
The single tax rate.
Right, and that, my understanding is that would be a one thousand one hundred dollar tax increase on the average tax bill, right?
If, if we're looking at the average single-family home, if we were to have a single tax rate over a split tax rate, the difference would be eight hundred and seventy-two dollars of an increase, rather than the two hundred and seventy dollars tonight.
And if you add eight hundred and seventy dollars to two hundred and seventy dollars, you get roughly eleven hundred dollars?
Well, if we had a single tax rate, right, the difference between whether we had it or not is eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Right.
So, plus what the two seventy...
So, one, it's two seventy versus eleven hundred?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Right, okay. So, if we did not split the rate today, tonight, then it would be an approximate eleven hundred dollar average tax increase.
Correct.
If we split the rate, or shift the rate to the residential, from the fourteen dollars and twenty cents per one thousand of value to twelve dollars and forty-three cents per one thousand dollars of value, that's a two hundred and seventy dollar increase.
Correct.
Is the twelve dollars and forty-three cent tax rate, is that shift, can we shift it anymore?
No, that's the maximum allowed.
And so, that's the two maximums, right? The fourteen-twenty, that's the maximum and the minimum, right? The fourteen-twenty and the twelve forty-three. And this body could do anything in between.
Correct.
Right, so, we could, we could do anything from an eleven hundred dollar increase, which is the most we could do, to the minimum, which is a two hundred and seventy dollar increase. That's, and that's effectively by changing the rate at which residential pays versus commercial. We're doing nothing relative to the property tax exemptions that currently exist, right?
Correct.
Okay, nothing we do at this rate would eliminate the property tax exemptions that we have for residents over sixty-five?
Nope.
Right? Or widowers, or disabled vets and their spouses, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, this is nice, nice stuff, right? This is super informative.
That was the goal in putting this together, and I think just going back to the purpose of tonight's meeting, and getting back to voting, you know, what we're voting on, there's so much that, you know, happens to get to this point. So, we wanted to put together like a booklet that, yes, we are distributing at the tax classification hearing, but I think it addresses, you know, all areas of the puzzle that come, you know, to today, so.
It's like a, I don't want to be insulted, but it's like a dummy's guide to municipal taxes. It really is soup to nuts.
We tried to write, write everything, especially on the, you know, how you get to what the minimum residential factor is, you know, just in a manner that you could sit and kind of go through it a couple of times, because it's not straightforward.
Right, it's a difficult subject.
You have to read through five, six, seven times before you're like, okay, you know, it's not simple math, by any means.
No, this is very helpful, and I think this is the first year you've done this?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had a booklet before, but it was more just geared towards, you know, really just on the math that, you know, gets to what we're doing tonight, and we wanted to include basically all areas that factor into determining what taxes are.
Okay, and this will be available online?
Yeah, we actually are going to have, you know, quite a few copies of the book printed. We're gonna put it in the library, in the Kennedy Center, there'll be some at both the assessor's windows, the collector's window, we can give some to the mayor's office.
Will you email me and perhaps the other councilors too with the link to this, because I would like to put it up there, so that people can see it? So, those are all the questions I have, thank you. Really, Mr. President, it comes down to whether or not we want to increase taxes by eleven hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars. We already spent the money, this is about who's gonna pay for it. This is the lowest tax increase we can put forth to the residential taxpayer, based on the budget that we, that we, this body voted for and passed in the spring. And just as, as, just to speak to that budget too, and I, I thought it was a pretty reasonable budget. I didn't see much fat in that budget. We didn't add, we didn't add a lot. There were some increases in school spending, there was some, you know, we've consistently added police and fire. I don't, as I look here and stare down the bill, I mean, it's easy to spend money, it's hard to pay the bill after you spent the money. I don't see anything, for me personally, that would change tonight, that would change my decision in the spring. It's not easy to raise taxes, it's not something that we enjoy, it's not something that residents enjoy, we pay the taxes too. But for the services that we get in the city of Quincy, and one of the speakers, there were three speakers, one of them referenced Hingham, and, well, Hingham does this, and they have an even tax rate. Hingham also doesn't, you know, you have to go to the town dump, they don't take anything, right? We don't, we don't charge a trash fee, right? Other municipalities our size and smaller charge a trash fee, we don't do that. So, that's absorbed in your, in your tax rate. So, some of the stuff that folks get, some of these incredible services like, you know, the library, the council on aging, our schools, our schools are top-notch. We are one of the safest cities, thanks to our fire and police personnel. So, this is paying for the, for the quality of life that we have in Quincy, which, there's always more we can do to make it better, that costs money. And we, as a council, me personally, as a counselor, I try and balance that. And I appreciate, I think it was Peter from Sedmond Street, I don't know if he's still here, but we spoke early, and I appreciate that he didn't say, you know, don't raise the taxes, he just said, just keep us in mind when you're making these decisions. And I, and I think that's probably the most powerful thing that someone could say is, hey, remember, this has real-life consequences that folks are out there, and they could be struggling, whether they're seniors trying to, you know, stay in their home on a fixed income, and here they are, they get a tax increase, that's, we hear those calls, we get those calls, we talk to those people. Those people are our friends, those people are our neighbors, and it's not that we're up here spending money willy-nilly. It's not, it's certainly not how I approach it, I don't think my colleagues do as well. We may differ from time to time on what's a priority to spend money on and what isn't, but our levy increase is five percent, that's a, that's a relatively modest increase when considering that we had contracts that came up. I mean, when, when we're talking about increase in these base costs, it's the cost to pay the firefighters and the police and the teachers, that costs money, unfortunately. Fortunately for them, and we give them a living wage, because they're members of our community and they play an important role in our community, want them to be compensated at a morally justifiable rate. So, all that being said, we already spent the money. I support shifting the tax burden, or minimizing the tax burden on the residential ratepayer as much as possible. This shift to twelve point, twelve dollars and forty-three cents does that, that's the most we can possibly shift the tax burden to benefit the residential taxpayer, and I'll certainly support that rate. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor Mahoney.
I'm not sure where to start, so Colleen, it might be with you, but I actually understand, you don't create the assessment of value of our homes, it's, it's based on the sales from prior year. And I know a lot of people like to think that the assessor's office actually is somehow punishing people because their houses are worth more, but that's not the case at all, and you're not actually responsible for setting the tax rate either, is that correct?
Correct. The board of assessors determines we meet the requirements set by the Department of Revenue in order to get the value certified.
And I understand what we're talking about tonight, which is a single rate versus the residential and the commercial rate, and the split rate gives the residents a lower rate, but part of the reason why, even though it's a lower rate, the assessed values are going up, but we're spending, and this has nothing to do with you, I think this has to do with, if I couldn't find the, it might be Mark Kavanaugh that I want to talk to. I guess that one of the questions that I have, and this is from Mark, it's not for you, so, I might come back to you though. So, Mark, one of the things that we're doing to lower the tax rate is free cash, which you did explain, eight million dollars is what we got in for free cash. I think we were estimating back when they were doing the budget somewhere around four, maybe, approximately.
Oh, what would come in, in total?
Yeah, what would come in.
Yeah, that was a, that's a fairly normal result for the past few years.
Okay, so, four was the normal result for the past four years, but we got eight this year, and you said it was multiple different facets as to how come we got eight. Could you expand upon, maybe, I know we have the information, but could you expand upon maybe the largest reasons why we got eight million dollars in free cash?
There are literally dozens of reasons why that go into why it comes out as eight million.
Top three, top three, largest, largest, top three.
We had higher revenues that were expected. We had a number of our department heads who were, I don't want to use the word...
When you say higher revenue, what do you mean by higher revenue, just out of curiosity?
Some of our revenue accounts came in higher than we had budgeted for. More revenue than expected.
So, one of the, one of the ones, I guess, if we just look at the, there was a breakout, and I'll probably not be able to see, lots of paper tonight. There was a breakout provided, and when I'm looking at some of the revenue sources, like your departmental, your department revenue for schools, it's not really that much higher, but you, but you have maybe ten, maybe ten thousand more. But out of curiosity, what's, what is the revenue for libraries, just out of curiosity? What, what creates that revenue?
Do you have revenue information to give today?
I was gonna ask Brian. I'm sorry that I bore him.
So, for libraries, that's primarily late fees.
Late fees for books, it's a late fees for books. So, when I'm going through this though, and I'm looking at the estimated receipts, so, and you're saying it's, it's the revenues that we were anticipating to get back in from the excess levies, I mean, from the free cash, what do you think that the top revenue sources were for, for eight million dollars?
Fees and permitting were largely increased, that's a lot to do with building.
Fees and permitting for the new buildings?
Yeah, for building the buildings. One of the largest increases was when we were building the southwest middle school, when that fund ended at the end of last fiscal year, there was an outstanding payment from SBA that we were still due. So, that actually significantly bumped up our free cash.
How much, by how much, because I saw that...
It was about two million dollars. I've checked the exact number. It is ironic, the state doesn't let you hold your books open, waiting for the state reimbursement.
So, the breakout of that is that, and it was done in your presentation, that of the eight million dollars, two point nine is gonna be used for reducing the tax levy or lowering our taxes, and the rest is gonna go into stabilization, snow and ice, and the retirement fund, correct?
Yes, OPEB. OPEB is different than retirement.
I know, it's different, I couldn't remember, OPEB, sorry.
And there will still be two point five million dollars remaining in free cash.
And there'll still be, there'll still be two point five million remaining in free cash, and what will the two point five million dollars in free cash, what is, what's the use for that extra two point five million dollars?
So, historically, we use it on merited issues. It doesn't have to be used, if it's not used, that should go into next year's free cash calculation.
Okay, so, what did we carry over last year?
Not that much, I believe it's in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I can't get the exact number, but we spent a considerable amount of it.
And what did we spend it on? I know, I slightly remember some of the things, but...
Primarily on the police contracts, the retro pay, I believe that wiped out.
What have our anticipated, what are, do we have anticipated use for that two point five? Because one of the questions that I think Councilor Palmucci was asking was, is that as low as we can go, is the twelve point, twelve dollars forty-three cents? But if we actually use the two point five million dollars, we could actually go lower if we had other uses to lower, the way we're artificially lowering the taxes by using free cash, and if we had two point five million dollars, it would bring that tax lower, so it would change it from two hundred and eighty dollars per average family homeowner to potentially a little bit less, is that correct?
It could be used to that purpose.
And, so, so, but we have to have an understanding as to what we're gonna be using, is it gonna be something we're gonna carry over, or is it something that we, as a council, potentially want to drop that? Because really, what's happening here is, and this is, this is one of the issues that I have with free cash, and one of the issues when I'm looking at this, there's another piece that I'm looking at in here, which is the one point eight million dollars that we're doing for twenty-twenty's budget.
That's for previous incumbents, is previous from twenty-twenty.
So, this, so this, I talked to Mr. Walker today, and I was asking him if this was, if this was from, he said it's the PO closures for fiscal year twenty-twenty tax rate. So, these are old, old incumbences that we, and how far back do they go?
The oldest one I closed was from fiscal twenty-sixteen.
Fiscal twenty-sixteen, and what's the most recent one you closed?
Oh, there's always a series of POs, POs that are done like June, around June thirtieth, the last day of the fiscal year this year was June twenty-eighth.
So, we had one point eight million dollars of...
Twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen, yes.
So, next year, and how much did we have last year, when we closed things out last year?
I believe it was about, so, it was like eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, we had a million dollars more this year that we closed out?
Yeah.
And what was it, two years ago, just out of curiosity?
I don't believe we did this two years ago.
Okay, so, this is something we've only done the last two years. So, I guess one of the, one of the issues that I have is that this money, so, when we do our budgets, and the number that we're using, when we're creating our, our tax levy includes other things from the cherry sheets in different areas, but we create a budget, and we do spend money in the city of Quincy. And when we did create the budget this last time, I did, I voted no, and I voted no, because we were creating additional departments, additional expenditures, additional jobs, additional, a lot of different additional things that we were having. So, I, I do think that, you know, now, now the bill's coming due, I understand that as well. However, when we have free cash that comes back, some of the things that we have... However, when we have free cash that comes back, some of the things that we have is we don't make an audit of what we're doing, what we're spending and we can't really see. You can see it because you work in it every day.
These are all them.
No, 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 I understand. I'm, I'm saying we, the city councillor, as we sit up here, we can't see where the money's being spent. We can ask you and you can come up and do a presentation for us, but it's very difficult to drive, to, to, to really look down and to see what's being expended or who's being hired and, and who works for the city of Quincy, what new bodies are coming into the city of Quincy, if they were accounted for. I, I don't know, I just know new people get hired and people will say, was that job part of the budget? Couldn't tell you because we can't tell, because, you know, we just get a bottom line number for that. But the bigger problem is, is the free cash, $8 million coming back, that's a lot. And you explained it with Sterling, Sterling Middle School and MSBA that we have to fund upfront and they give us the money. And that's sometimes where that comes from. But sometimes it's because we didn't expend the money, such as the, going back to 2019, 2016.
But giving the example, that $1.8 million, it represents about 0.3% of all approved spending during that period. So we're talking about 99.7% of funds were spent.
Again, free cash, it gets certified every year and we, we create a budget every year and we try to go through the budget to make sure that we're not fat in the budget, but we created multiple department, new departments and, and different things. It goes to the taxpayers and that is our job. And that was one of the things, one of the people came up and spoke to us and said, you know, you know, it's our job to say yes and it's our job to say no. And we seem to have no problem spending money in the city of Quincy, which then offsets to the, to the homeowners having to pay for it. And I do think we have a fiscal responsibility to the homeowners as well. But when I'm looking at this, I just, I just know that this was going to come due and to, what was the increase last year for the taxes, last, average family homeowner last year?
$120.
So $120 last year. It's funny, $120 last year in a election year and $284 this year post-election.
$271.
$270, 70?
$271.
$71, sorry.
I don't know where the 20.
$9, $271 post-election, okay.
Was there a question?
No, that was a statement. Thank you, for now, thank you. I'm just, I'm just a little frustrated because I, I think we, I think we, I just have a, a large issue with the, the way things are presented sometimes and $8 million for excess taxes, certified excess cash that's coming in and having $2.5 million that we're going to hold on to free cash and not giving it back to the taxpayers after we expended the issues that we, that we, the city of Quincy. I think that, that's due back to the taxpayers. That's just my personal opinion. I, I think we should be budgeting in our budget, the things that we want to spend, but not just have free rein to spend money anyplace we want with the $2.5 million in free cash that will remain after all these votes are done. So I can't support unless we're going to use the $2.5 million to actually lower the tax rate a little bit lower because 12.43 is lower than last year for the average homeowner, but the assessed values are going up and the expenditures of what we spend in the city of Quincy are, are going up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick to, to elaborate on the $8 million of free cash, and maybe this is from Mr. Kavanaugh. You said 2.9 of it is going to be used to reduce the, the tax levy and lower the taxes. So 2.9 million of that free cash is going towards paying down the tax rate?
That's correct. It's 2.9 is, will be coming directly off the levy with that appropriation. And that's actually very fitting with what we've used in free cash over the past five years. We look back and over the past five years, we've taken 15.7 million in total over the past five years from free cash and put it towards the levy to reduce the tax rate. And that works out to an average of 2.6 million a year. So 2.9 million this year from free cash to reduce the, to reduce the levy in addition to as, as Eric and the councillor were speaking about, the 1.8 million in unused money from previous years, unused purchase orders that we can cancel and take into free cash to put it towards the tax levy.
I remember in previous years, especially, it's snowing right now, who knows how many inches, we're going to get six to eight or whatever it is in this area, but the 111 inches of 2015 where we, every year we had to break up, I think 3.3 million dollars every year to pay it down and then we finally got it off the books.
The state put in a three-year amortization program, which we actually ended off paying in two years.
In two years, yes.
Yeah.
But I remember one year where we had to say, it was going to be $456 increase and we said, let's go 100 less dollars to get to 356 and let's not include, let's, let's, let's pay, let's not include the, the snow money that we were going to pay on that. And I, and I can remember years, this is, this is my fourth tax rate and my fourth budget cycle, and I could remember President Kroll standing at, standing down and saying, well, why don't we pay down the rate with free cash? You know, so we, we've been talking about this paying down the rate for a while now and now we're coming to fruition. Can you talk about what it would be for amount, you said $271 increase on the average assessed value of 492 is the, the amount? What would be the amount if we didn't pay it down?
If we hadn't taken the $2.9 million appropriation from free cash and put it towards the tax levy, I have the tax rate would have been in the 307, 310 range for the average single family taxpayer without that 2.9 million.
And what would be the average increase in, 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 in a yearly, like what would be the amount? Would it be $400?
It would, it, well, yeah, the average bill would have been up 307 so that the increase would have been up over 300. The bill would have gone to 64, 6500 for the average single family bill.
I see, so 6500 instead of 61?
Without utilizing some.
I see what you mean, okay. So in a sense, because we have free cash in, in your eyes, I mean, you're the financial guy to play with, right?
I wouldn't say play with it, but yeah, because we have the luxury of not only the free cash, but a two and a half million surplus for the year. The surplus as well as the research and going after the unused purchase orders over the course of the year and the previous year, that's an additional $1.8 million that in effect had already been appropriated for previous years, not spent. So we take that, put it towards the tax levy and reduce it as well.
My distinguished colleague that's no longer here, Joe Finn, would always talk about the stabilization and the OPEB. And I can remember, I don't see him here tonight, would come in every year and say, you're not putting any funding towards or money towards this trust or stabilization fund. Well, are we going with a little over a million dollars for each one this year?
Uh, yeah, well, we're going a million dollars for stabilization, a million dollars for OPEB, which didn't exist when I first got here. Stabilization, two years previous to me getting here was $900,000. And the rating agencies and DOR were, were all over us. We were coming out of a recession, but they were all over us to really enforce that fiscal policy and put, put aside the 50% a year free cash. We've largely adhered to that. We have more flexibility now. They're giving us credit for having so much in reserves. Our total fund balance reserves this year, as I said, will be over 27 million. That's a far cry from only having 900,000 in the rainy day fund.
You talked a little bit about revenues. Does the excise tax, is that part of the revenues?
That absolutely helps with local fees.
Okay, because I remember we talked about getting more excise tax for people moving in here.
The general economy, those local fees, those local receipts, meals, taxes, they all help, they're all part of it.
I mean, like we're talking about around the well here tonight with the city council is, we've kind of already, if you had your chance with appropriations of funding, whether it's through the budget or it's bonding, your time to say yes or no is at that time. And I know that I'm part of some of the cutting processes throughout this, throughout the year. That's your time to speak up when the appropriations of funding are coming down the pike in a budget cycle or there's bonding that's going to be asked, whether you, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, but I mean, to your credit, councillor, to the entire council's credit, a lot of those expenditures that you're voting on at those times, those are union contracts for teachers, police, fire. A lot of our fixed costs usually go in the 90 to 95% range. There's very little discretionary or new spending involved in those budgets.
I mean, this last year was tight. I'm going to be honest with you, the budget cycle, I looked at that, it was pretty tight. Now, we got lucky with the snow, the snow and ice.
Two years in a row now.
We were, we were at a half a million dollar surplus, which you just never know, one storm could, could wipe that right out.
One storm, one good storm, six to eight inches tonight, that could be 500, 600,000.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know, I know the business, I know. And I know a constituent asked about brimming and, and whether you, whether you want to take a chance with not having that out there. Well, let me tell you something, it buys you some time to get some of the roads done, especially when the morning comes over and you don't have it out there, you can't buy the time to get to that level. And, you know, public safety is, is far more important. So I, these are really all my questions that I really had for you. Mark, I think coming forward, I mean, this is a lot of free cash left over here, 8 million. I know you said there's, there's a lot of different factors here, but for the city council, your time is to take a look at the budgetary items during the budget cycle and the bonding that comes across from us, so, and we will see.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy, then Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Good evening, Counselor.
Just a, a great job on the, on the whole presentation. I mean, both groups, yourself and, and Colleen's, Colleen's team, they're, a couple of quick questions. It looks like, which I'm always amazed, you know, because what Quincy has, and we mentioned it a little bit about services and everything that we have here, and a lot of people take it for granted, if it disappeared, the chamber would probably be packed with people complaining about whatever we, whatever disappeared. But it seems like Quincy, you know, always the city with the town kind of atmosphere has, has fit right in the, in the middle of, of all of your comparisons. And a little bit on the low side on, on one of the comparisons here about the family home tax bill at average Quincy home value, but the values, I mean, everybody's value has gone up. Homes that at least down in Ward 1 in Hausneck and, and I think across the city come up for sale, they're gone within days, which is, I remember times where, years ago, if I, we were selling a house, you'd be out there for six months, you'd have to wait a while for the, you know, not the winter to sell it, try to sell it in the summer, the whole, now it looks like you put it up at any time and it's gone. And, and one of the things that, you know, jumped out at me, I, I know that I see that, that decrease in the rate every year, but with the values going up and, and, and the comment that Counselor Palmucci made of talking about a $270 tax increase for the median household compared to 1100 at the $14 rate compared to the 1243, you know, it's, it's not bad. I mean, and a lot of people are probably going to say my tax bill went up and, you know, it all depends on, on where you're at, I guess in regards to the value of your home and where you live and et cetera, and some will go up, some will probably be a wash and some might go down. But your presentation, Mark, it just gets better every year, it's clearer. I know you have your right-hand man Eric Mason there to straighten anything out, but I'm just pleased to see the, the city in good fiscal condition and moving forward with, with the downtown and the growth, which, which comes back and helps us immensely. So thank you very much. Colleen, can I get you at the podium just for a sec? Thanks, Mark. Hi, Colleen.
Hi, Hoya.
Good. I'm right into that presentation, I was just talking about your presentation about the median single family sale price. And I know I want to thank you, I, I got the, the pleasure of being tutored today a little bit by Colleen and, and Chris Rooney for about an hour as we went over a lot of things. And a lot of the questions I had, I wanted to try to base them on, you know, residential folks that sometimes get caught up in watching the council meetings or reading about it and, you know, when you do it day in and day out with acronyms and, and comments and, and different things like that, you can lose the regular Joe Q public out there. I, I get lost at times. But today, when we sat down, I just want to commend you on the clarity here in the presentation that I think we're going to be able to put up on the website. It really shows how the values have gone up in all of the neighborhoods, in particular, I'm on that from Hausneck to Montclair slide. And, you know, in, at the same time, the administration, the council, yourself, everybody that's involved is, is fighting to keep that rate down and we can't control the market. But, and we talked a little bit about that today, but you can see the decrease in the tax rate, another little decrease in the commercial tax rate, and we have so much, so much going on here in Quincy that that's positive in regards to growth and, and, and more growth is going to come. So I just wanted to thank you guys for the work you did and thanks for the time today. It's a, it's a solid story here. You know, everybody wants to say we're gonna, we're not going up at all or, you know, we're going to come down, everybody wants less, but the services we get and the, and what comes out of the city of Quincy is, is positive all the way around. And this was a great presentation and you reminded me today too, without that $18 million in growth to help us, you know, to keep it, keep the engine moving, it all affects the tax rate, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I hope like, again, that this helps for like you're saying, people at home watching and so forth, that they can read this, they can follow along.
Yeah, and we also, Chairman Kroll, we talked a little bit today to, I know that I'm going to set up some community meetings with the seniors to try to, and get Colleen and Chris, John down there a little bit on, talking to them a little bit more on the exemptions, on what they can get so they understand how to tackle it if they haven't.
And I think the tax deferral, definitely.
Yeah.
You know, with increasing the income limit to 58,000, that might open the doors for more people that could meet the requirements. And I do think that is a, you know, it's a good option for somebody, you know, if they don't have a mortgage on the property and they want to remain in their home, that they can defer their taxes and their water and sewer bill until the time they were to sell their home. It's, you know, a win for the city, the city does get paid and it's also a win for the taxpayer that, you know, they're able to stay in the home that they wish to stay in. The interest rate is fixed at 4%, which is very competitive with any bank around. So, you know, I do think it's definitely an option that if a senior is finding it difficult to pay their bills, that they should look for the tax deferral program.
That's all, it's all good stuff and just to make sure that they, that they do understand that they can do that.
They know what's out there and hopefully, the, the more outreach we can do as a community, the better.
No, it's all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is always, I mean, this is the fourth time I've sat for this classification hearing and discussion and it, it never, well, it's never the same, there's never continuity, people never seem to really understand it, which is disappointing and disheartening sometimes, but it's also a difficult discussion when people perceive things in certain ways. I think everyone's alluded to the gentleman that came up and spoke tonight, I think, and he was the only one that really spoke to tax classification. But the most difficult part about this reality that we're currently facing is the increase in valuations and that is not driven by us. That's not driven by us, that's not driven by the city, that's driven by the amount of money that people are paying and their willingness to pay for the values of, of, of homes in Quincy. And just a couple of weeks ago, I'm so grateful for the, the entire Board of Assessors, Chris, John and Colleen for taking part in Ward 3's Town Hall Series. And we had a small group at Wallaston School, it was the least attended of all of them, which I was very surprised because this is such a complicated subject, I was hoping that people wanted to learn more. Counselor Mahoney was there and, you know, I'm assuming she's still learning about the process, but, you know, even then, it was very important and integral for people to, to understand what really goes into this calculation. And so the vote tonight on the tax classification, if you're not voting to shift it for a split between commercial and residential owners, you're really supporting a higher tax rate at the end of the day for, for residents of the city, which on the other side, and I can't believe I'm going to say this, but if you look at this free cash amount that's still left, what that actually indicates is that there isn't, there's a surplus in cash. That means that the budgetary amounts that we've allocated, that we've approved as a council, there is a surplus of cash left over. So what are we going to do with that? We're going to do the best with the votes that we can. We can't make decisions on where to spend that cash, but we can make a decision to support the spend. we can make a decision to support the spending of the cash, which will reduce the tax rate. So, I'm, I'm happy to support the classification. I understand that people go through difficult times. It is a terrible thing that wages are not keeping up with the, with the costs of, and rises in inflation and in home values. I suffered through that personally, as I'm sure my colleagues do here. And, you know, we're with you as, as residents of the city. And that's a whole nother discussion that is largely and unfortunately out of our control. But tonight, we're going to do the best that we can to support the minimal amount of increase in the tax rate by the adjustment of this tax classification. So, thank you, everyone, tonight.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to point out two things that I had noticed when I was going through the presentations that were presented us, in front of us tonight. The first is, you know, most front of mind, I think, is the excess. And I think it's because we always approach the work we do between both of your offices really conservatively. We don't ever want to over-project what we're going to get in revenues. And I think that is the best way to approach these things, is, you know, underestimate. And then when we have an increase of revenues that come in that are unexpected, it's a wonderful thing. But we certainly don't want to over-project and find ourselves in a place where we're not making up the money that we're anticipating. So, I appreciate that we are able to have the, you know, the 2.85 here in additions. But it's because we always approach things in a really conservative way. And that's something that I personally will always advocate for. And I think it's a good practice to continue. The second thing I noticed in the presentation, which I think is something that, you know, we should point out, is that when you look at the share percentages between residential and commercial and other, you know, the residential share of this has slowly decreased over time, which is a great thing to see, that on the commercial side it's starting to pick up, right? And that's something that we've seen in the last, you know, year or two. But if you look here, over time, the residential sort of aspect of this has really decreased because we're picking up more commercial, right? And, and that is something that we're seeing come online, the more we have commercial development come. But that's not immediate either. And that is something that, you know, your office works really hard to show us, is that there is a formula behind all this. Like, things coming online today isn't going to come online with the tax rate until the following year. There is a rhyme and reason behind all of this. And we are seeing the changes slowly take effect now, coming into this tax year. And so, I'm excited to see that this is something that we had projected and is actually coming to fruition, you know? To that, I know Council Palmucci had asked about some of the exemptions that are in here. And I certainly have been shy for advocating for additional exemptions. But I want to take a moment to also stress some points that were brought up here this evening, which is, you know, there is a math behind this. There isn't, you know, just some practice of throwing out arbitrary numbers to try to provide more exemptions or to try to tax less. I mean, there is, there's extensive formulas and math and work that goes behind this. And I just want to thank you guys for, for bringing this in front of us this evening, for doing the work that it takes to get, to get this to match, you know, the needs of the city and the budget that we present to you guys in the spring. And I also want to thank you guys for taking the opportunity to walk through this, not only with me, but with my colleagues, and then to work through scenarios on how we can continue to, you know, better support our residents with finding alternative ways to provide exemptions, right? This is something that can't just be done because we want it. We can't just will it to happen. There is work and formulas in state law around how we can dictate this. And I just want to say thank you because you guys have really educated me on this in the last couple of years. And you've always kept an open-door policy on how we can get creative to continue to create and build on the exemptions that we have. So, I just want to thank you guys for that. And I want to point out that, you know, this, again, the rhyme and reason behind the work that comes to this is starting to come to fruition now, as we can see with the residential share going down. So, I'm looking forward to that continuing to go down and have the commercial pick up a little bit more. And yeah, I appreciate that you guys always have the open door to continue to work to find other ways to move forward on this. So, thank you guys for your time. And I'm excited to, as always, vote to have a higher commercial and a lower residential rate. So, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Or Mr. President.
What's that, Councilor?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, thoughts from the council? All right. With that, Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
2019-185, an appropriation for $2,240,000.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion, Councilor.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilor Kane to approve, seconded by, first, Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is number two, 2019-186, an appropriation for $4,152,521.86 for short term.
Motion away from the reading.
Motion away from the reading. On the motion, Councilor.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, 2019-187.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Yes. That's right. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy.
On the motion.
On the motion. Counselor Palmucci.
So, this is, this is the $2.9 million that from general, from free cash that we're using to buy down the tax bill for the average residential, or for everyone, for the residential property taxpayer. I just, just point a clarification. We, we cannot increase this number. The city council cannot increase this number, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a.
Even if we wanted to, we can't increase that number. Okay. Just clarifying. Thank you.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next is number four, 2019-188, an appropriation for $1,800,000.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion, Councilor Kane.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Council Mahoney.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members.
Next is number five, 2019-189, an appropriation.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Six members.
Six members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please. Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2019-190, an appropriation, amending council order 2019-122. Upon the request of the Director of Municipal Finance, with the recommendation of his honor, the mayor, the sum of the council order 2019-122 is hereby amended to $1,660,000, reduced section B to $980,000 for Quincy Access Television.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded.
I mean, it's Council Hughes. I'm looking at Council Kane.
Yeah.
Council Mahoney.
I didn't know that. For point of clarification, this, when we're amending this, it's, could we just have a little explanation as to what's going on here?
So, involving this council order, we, there is a law passed, I believe it was in 2016, and this is the first year it has to be done regarding the user fees generated through cable service. In this case, it's just Comcast. And they have to pay a percent to, one, to the school system that allows for technology for education, but the majority of the percentage goes to funds for QATV. So, we're amending this to better reflect the projected revenues for this year.
So, how do we come up with a number in the spring for the?
So, that was based in the spring upon, because we only, we used to only receive the city's portion. But under the new laws, we have to, we're now receiving what used to go directly to QATV. So, now we're seeing them together. There was an estimate made. I spoke with our independent auditor to try to calculate the number with some estimates.
So, we overestimated, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was over, it was overestimated. But per that council order, there was a limit set on it. And this is just better reflecting that.
So, now, so now, because we overestimated what we, what we, because of the new law, we overestimated not knowing what the, what the amount was going to be. We're adjusting it at this point to what we think the budget, what the correct number is that we'll get in.
Yes, sir.
And the money will come into the city and then be sent out to, we used to go directly to QATV and to the Quincy Public Schools?
It used to go directly to QATV, then our portion, because obviously, schools are part of the city, we received.
So, now it will come into the city and the appropriation for covering the cost of QATV will go directly over to them, and they'll have an operational cost that, okay?
Exactly.
Okay. So, that's the new law. Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion made by Councilor Hughes, seconded. Council DeBona. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please. Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2019-191, adopting percentages of local tax by each class of real and property, property for FY '19.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please. Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2019-193, order of revocation for Quincy College Enterprise Fund. Upon the request of the Director of Municipal Finance, with the approval of his honor, the mayor, the city will revoke the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half of the Massachusetts General Law C, seeing Quincy College as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2020.
Apparently, this is a, per the DOR, this is a housekeeping item. The city does not manage finances on behalf of the college anymore. So, this is to eliminate that enterprise account. So, motion approved.
Motion made by Councilor Kane, seconded by Councilor McCarthy.
On the motion.
Council Mahoney and Council Palmucci.
I have a point of clarification from the auditor Susan O'Connor, as to when was the last time that this account was used and, and, and what the status of it is.
Okay. So, basically, I believe it was about two years ago, the college overtook all their payables and their payroll. So, we no longer have any of their funds open on our books. When the free cash was being certified, I had a conversation with the city's representative at the DOR, and he was aware that the col, the college is no longer on the city of Quincy's books. So, per Mass General Law, he has requested that we do a housekeeping matter and close out that particular fund. Currently, there's, there's nothing open under that account. And there hasn't been for two years.
So, we don't carry anything for the college anymore?
No, we do not. No, everything has been transferred over.
Health care, everything, everything's?
No, health care, we do. But what this, this enterprise fund, this is basic, that this was basically their operating fund. So, with the health care, the city pays the health care and the college reimburses the city. But with the operating fund, their payables, their payroll was all paid out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilor. Council Palmucci.
Yes, thank you. Through you to the mayor's representative. Why are we paying anything for the college at this point if, if the certification from the, the Community College Certification Authority was that they needed to be more removed from us? I remember that when we discussed the, they wanted to go to a full-year degree program. And they were trying to, to, you know, thread that needle with still being attached to the city but being independent. So, I get why we're removing the enterprise account. That makes sense. But why are we still paying health care costs for college employees? And are we, the city reimbursed for that?
Through you, Mr. President, I believe.
If you don't have any answer, that's something that you could get back to us.
Absolutely. Or if the, defer to the auditor, if she does have a clarification on that.
I, I believe the college is still a, a member of the city of Quincy's retirement system. So, therefore, that's, I'm assuming that's why the health insurance is still covered through the city.
So, the health insurance is just for the retirees, not for the?
It's not just for the retirees, no. It's for the retirees and the active employees.
Okay.
And then the, and Quincy College then reimburses the city of Quincy.
Okay. All right. And it's food for thought for a later discussion, I think. But all right. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion made by Councilor Kane to approve, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please. Madam Clerk.
Number 10, 2019-194.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Motion to accept the gift and send a thank you note.
Motion made, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members. The item passes. Next item on the agenda, please. Madam Clerk.
Number 10, 2019-194.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Motion to accept the gift and send a note of thanks to this group and copy of Council Palmucci.
Yep. Make sure he's copied, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, Council Palmucci.
Just a quick question. Who actually sends the thank you notes? And do they actually get sent? I've never seen one.
Kathy.
Oh, okay. All right, good. I don't know. Been up here 10 years. We always say it. I've never seen one of these.
Please CC Council Palmucci.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
When you popping up there to drop off a gift basket over the holiday season, maybe you can take a look at a sample.
Just making sure, you know.
Hey, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Eight members. Number 11 on the agenda, 2019-195.
Motion away from the reading.
On the motion.
Please, motion to accept the gift and send a note of thanks to this group and copy of Counsel Pelmucci.
Yep, make sure it's copied, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBarna. Counsel Harris. Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Pelmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. Approval of previous meeting minutes from November 18, 2019. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as habits, communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Communications?
Yes. I do have some communications this evening. I have a utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for Advertising for a grant of location for Mass Electric Verizon for 178 Robertson Street. I also have some traffic requests to refer to Ordinance Committee for Advertising in Ward One. No parking on the east side of Edison Park from Washington Street to north of Washington Street. Add loading zone on the south side of Washington Street, east to Temple Street, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., excluding Sunday and holidays. Ward Three, add four-way stop sign at the intersection of Belmont Street and Holbrook Road. Add a four-way stop at the intersection of Belmont Street and Hamilton Ave. Add a handicap parking to 57 Hilda Street. Ward Six, add handicap parking to 100 Faxon Road. Add a four-way stop at the intersection of East Swanum Street and Sonoma Road.
Does that conclude?
It does, thank you very much.
Excellent. Any unfinished business from preceding meeting? Seeing none, reports of committees, Counsel Yang.
So, earlier this meeting, we had a positive recommendation for three items that I'd like to bring out. The first is 2018-027, ordinance amending city of Quincy's only ordinance adding section 6.10 marijuana establishments, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Yang, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBarna.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Pelmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members.
The next is 2018-028, order accepting the sales tax provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 64N marijuana tax as amended by Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Yang, seconded by Counsel Pelmucci. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBarna.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.